And it looks like we're all set, Madam Chair. The issues with the technical difficulties with the cable. Office is all set.
Excellent. Let's start then. Good morning. The City of Boston zoning Board of Appeal hearing for November 9th is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the provisions of an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency that was signed by Governor Baker on June 16, 2021. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings that it adopted during the COVID-19 pandemic until April 1st, 2022. The hearing of this board is being held remotely via the WebEx platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout, unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows. Elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is, most individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise your hand icon in the application via the WebEx event platform. To raise your hand, click the participant information icon. From then, find your name and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand raising icon. Click the icon and your hand will be raised virtually. Click it again and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Again, if you are connected by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide their comments. When you have a chance to provide your comments, please, after you put your name and address on the record, give us new information. If somebody else has already stated your concern, please let us know that after you put your name and address on the record. It is the intent, in the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meet or the meeting hosts will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. And again, after you've put your comments in on the record, please lower your hand immediately so we can keep up with what going, what's going on. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. So let's, let's just do a quick roll call. Mr. Fortune?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Ehrlich.
Here I am.
Excellent. Good to see you. Ms. Dong?
Good morning, Chairwoman.
Good morning. Mr. Rogiro?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Mr. Robinson?
Good morning.
Good morning. And Mr. Laigris?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Morning. Mr. Hampton, are you on today too?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Hampton. Mr. Fortune, it's on to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of October 19th, 2021. We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second, Laigris.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next order of business is the approval of the board policy and procedures manual.
I'd like to make, to ensure that we have a deferral to call up the chair so that we all have additional time to do a quick eyeball of it.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the first order of extension, calling BOA 9400633 Aspen Wall Road. Madam Chair, the board originally granted this relief on December 6th of 2019. So this is an applicant's first request for an extension. The relief would normally expire on December 6th, 2021. However, tolling applies, tolling applies to this relief. So the relief remained valid. With tolling, the new expiration date of the relief is March 14th, 2023. I recommend the board confirm for the record that this relief does not expire until that date and that that applicant may return then to request their first extension if necessary. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, this is Derek Robinson. I'll be recusing myself from this extension here.
So this is a six-member board just for this case. Yes, go ahead. Please put your name and address on the record.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Mike Ross, attorney for the applicant on this matter. I thought the secretary did an excellent job of teeing this up, but I'm happy to talk more about the proposal and why we're seeking an extension.
No, we just want to know of your presence, so may we have a motion?
No, motion for an extension. Second. To expire on March 14th, 2023.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 810882 Forte Harding Road. The board originally granted this relief on October 30th, 2018. The board then granted its first one-year extension in 2020. That was to expire on November 30th of 2021. Tolling does not apply to this extension because it was not granted prior to the start of COVID state of emergency. However, tolling does apply to the original grant of relief from November 30th, 2018. With tolling, the new expiration date of that relief is March 7th of 2022. The applicant seeks an extension until November 30th of 2022. I recommend that the board grant this request to that date and confirm that the extension includes all applicable tolling. This is technically the applicant's first needed extension and so the applicant may return on the date to request a second extension if necessary. If the board choose, so chooses, it may also grant an extension in March 7th of 2023. That would be one-year extension for the new toll expiration date. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Alex Burke of Forte Harding Road, Hyde Park, Mass.
Yes, let's, let's, let's have a motion for expiration on November 30th, 2022, so we know that these projects are moving. Motion?
Extend to November 30th, 2022, taking into account all tolling is included.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set until that date. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 9757749 Leland Street. The board originally granted this relief on November 22nd of 2019. So this is the applicant's first request for extension. The relief would normally expire on November 22nd of 2021. However, tolling applies to this relief, so the relief remains valid. With tolling, the new expiration date of the relief is February 27th of 2023. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that this relief does not expire until that date and that the applicant may return then to request their first extension if necessary. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Sharon Cho with Dorchester Bay Economic Development Corporation.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend till February 27th, 2023.
inclusive of all tolling.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr., Mr. Laigris, can you make the motions so that we have an attorney's eye on this, please? Thank you.
Motion to extend to February 27th, 2023, inclusive of all relevant tolling.
Thank you. Is, is there a second? All those in favor? Any, any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 82358973 Rutland Street. The board originally granted this relief on November 6th of 2018. So this is an applicant's first request for an extension. The relief would normally have expired on November 6th of 2021, of 2020. However, the tolling applies to this relief, so the release may, remains valid. Excuse me. With tolling, the new expiration date of the relief is February 11th, 2022. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that this relief does not expire until that date and that if the applicant may, they may return then to request their first extension if necessary. The applicant has not requested any additional extension to the letter of the book, to the board. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Timothy Burke with a business address of 142 Berkeley Street in Boston. I'm the architect representing the applicant.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Secretary, could I have that, that date again?
Sure, Ms. Laigris. The date is February 11th of 2022.
Motion to extend or confirm extension through February 11th, 2022 with any applicable tolling.
Second that motion.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling case BOA 938002208 Harold Street. The board originally granted this relief on June 14th of 2019. So this applicant's first request for an extension. The relief would normally have expired on June 14th of 2021. However, tolling applies to this relief, so the relief remains valid. With tolling, the new expiration date of the relief is September 19th of 2022. I recommend the board confirm the record that the relief does not expire until that date and that the applicant may return then to request their first extension if necessary. The applicant requests an extension until November 9th of 2022. The board may grant it if they choose to do so. That date would also resolve all tolling issues and provide the applicant with additional approximately two-month extension. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small. Business address of 51 Dobson Road, Rachel. You're here today seeking an extension of-
Hold on, hold on, counselor. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to, to confirm the expiration and extend through November 9th, 2022, which includes all tolling and additional two-month extension.
Second that motion.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set until then, counselor.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Calling case BOA 10236311599 Columbus Avenue. The board originally granted this relief on February 7th of 2020. So this is applicant's first request for an extension. The relief would normally expire on February 7th of 2000. This is 27, that's wrong. 22. However, the tolling, I'm sorry, there was a typo here. It says February 7th of 2027, but it's 22. However, tolling applies to this relief, so the relief remains valid. With tolling, the new expiration date of relief is May 15th of 2023. I recommend that the board confirm the record that this relief does not expire until that date and that the applicant may return and request their first extension if necessary. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sharon Small from Urban Edge Housing Corporation, business address 1542 Columbus Ave.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Madam, make a motion to confirm expiration to May 15th, 2023, inclusive of all tolling.
I'll second that motion, Secretary.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll see you then.
Calling the last case for extension, calling BOA 94625930 Cumberland Street. The board originally granted this relief on August 30th of 2019. So this applicant's first request for an extension. The relief would have normally expired on August 30th of 2021. However, tolling applies to this relief, so the relief remains valid. With tolling, the new expiration date of the relief is December 5th of 2022. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that this relief does not expire until that date and that the applicant may return then to request their first extension if necessary. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the board. My name is Huzakaya Pratt, architect for the project. My address is 54 Lowell Avenue, Dune, Mass.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a motion to confirm expiration through December 5th, 2022, inclusive of all tolling.
I'll second that, Secretary.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Secretary, are you out of breath already?
Now, it's getting pumped up.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Calling the next case for board final arbiter, calling BOA 1151928194200 Shawmet Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Attorney David Gottlieb, 309 Washington Street in Brighton. And I'm also here with the architect, if the architect could introduce themselves as well.
Yes, my name is Timothy Burke. I have a business address of 142 Berkeley Street in Boston.
Okay, so, Mr. Gottlieb, tell us why you're here.
The applicant requests approval of a plan reviewed by ISD on December 17th, 2020 for commercial parking for 89 vehicles pursuant to the proviso previously granted by the board by decision entered August 18th, 2021.
And so why are you here?
I'd like to let the architect explain the, the process and the improvements we've made and why we're here seeking a board final arbiter.
Mr. Architect, can you go directly to what the request is so that we know right, right away, rather than go through the process, just directly to the request?
Certainly, yes. During the, working with the BPDA with the proviso that was attached to the most recent zoning approval, there was a request to redesign the parking lot to introduce half, 50% as compact spaces and reduce the aisle sizes. And since we can't add any spaces, the applicant wasn't, didn't really want to make the spaces so small for a parking lot that serves a lot of the public. Those are more suited for residential type of applications. And also the curb cuts that are existing sort of define where these aisles are to begin with. We did do all the other work that was requested as part of the proviso in terms of replacing the signs and, and making, maintaining all the landscaping that had previously been approved by the Southend Landmarks District Commission.
And Madam Chair, just to add something, we had obtained approval from the Southend Landmark District Commission for planting beds.
Who is this talking? Who is this talking? Mr. Gottlieb, was that you talking?
So.
Joe, can you hold on for a minute? Okay?
Yeah, so, you know, get DBW, like, you know, they wanna, they wanna a bunch of things. But here's my, my problem.
Can we mute, please?
My neighbor next door is starting fighting. He hired Kyle Johnson, who's pretty savvy zoning.
Joe, Joe McCaffrey, are you, are you speaking on this project?
So.
No.
I'm sorry, I'll unmute him. I apologize.
Can we mute him, please?
Yes, so I, Jeff, can you please chime in on this? Jeff Hampton, are you there?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I was calling Joe to tell him he had a hot mic.
We said, seem business-related, so.
Error message here.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so, Mr. Hampton, what's, what's the BPDA thought on this?
This is the first I'm hearing of it.
Madam Chair, if, if I could just add two quick points here.
Mr. Gottlieb, hold on. Can we defer this until we've had a conversation with BTD and BPDA so we can get a meeting of the minds? Because I do know that BTD, you know, is, is involved in identifying the number of spaces here. So we just need to make sure that, that these two agencies are talking to each other. So may I have a motion for deferral?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
Hold on two seconds, Madam Chair.
Let's put it into the next year so that hopefully.
Madam Chair, we don't have any dates set yet for 2022. So we can, we could probably do the last day of December, the last December meeting. And then if we don't, I'm sure the dates will be then figured out.
Okay, cool. So.
December 14th at 9:30.
12:14 at 9:30, okay. And please make sure, Mr. Gottlieb, that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed so that this is just, in our, in our view, a de minimis action.
And, and one quick point, we actually have an op-
Points, no quick points, we're done. Next case, please.
Go ahead, Madam Chair, thank you. Calling the next case with board final arbiter, calling BOA 10824681515 River Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Mike Ross, attorney, principal of the applicant. We were in front of the board March 23rd, 2021, for this application, 1550 River Street. And this is a very simple change. We're just looking to move one parking space. It's interesting because at the hearing, Madam Chair, I think you might have even mentioned something about should the parking space be close to the building? And I had at the time assured you that it was perfectly fine. And I need to eat a little bit of crow hair. It wasn't. And during the BPDA design review process, we were asked to move the, that third parking space along the property line instead.
Okay.
So there should be plans to that effect in the.
Let me just ask quickly, Mr. Robinson, do you have the updated plan?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, everything good?
Everything's good.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve. Second, Joe.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling next, excuse me, calling the next case with building code. Calling case BOA 1194413319 Marlborough Street. This is to remove the fire balconies at the front and back of 319 Marlborough shared with 321 Marlborough. The violation is the ninth edition 780 CMR 1016 exit access, 1016.2. Egress through intervening spaces means the egress from dwelling units or sleeping areas shall not lead through other sleeping areas, toilet rooms, or bathrooms. Second violation is the ninth edition 780 CMR IEBC 805, the means of egress. 805.3.1, the minimum number. Every story utilized for union occupancy on which there is a work area that includes exits or corridors shared by one or more tenant within the work area shall be provided with the minimum number of exits based on the occupancy and the argument load in accordance with the International Building Code. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Doug Anderson, Commercial Construction Consulting, address of 313 Congress Street.
So Doug, before you get into the details of this, can you tell us whether you've gotten building code relief? Or have you gotten relief from this board? Or if this is as of right, or what triggered this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What triggered this is the renovation of the adjacent 321, 323 Marlborough, both of which were 10-unit dwellings. And they are being combined into a single unit. The, the balconies in question would have been required for means of egress from 321 over to 319. That is no longer necessary. And 319 has two means, currently they have four means of egress, they only need two. One is the stair and one is the other balcony connecting to 317.
Okay, so we need to just clarify that, in fact, this is a, an appeal for 319, but it's 321. All, do they have all appropriate means of egress as a, as a standalone?
Yes, Doug Anderson, yes, Madam Chair, they do.
Okay, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
The plans are good and I've reviewed, there's additional commentary on this and, and I don't see an issue here, this seems to be a pretty straightforward case.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, Laigris.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Calling the next case with building code, calling case BOA 1251685353 Beacon Street. This is build a new approved roof deck. Architectural plans to replace the rubber roof. And interior work to achieve the new stair-to roof. The violation is the ninth edition 780 CMR 1011 stairways. 1011.2, width and capacity, 34 inches, 36 inches minimum width stairway required. The ninth edition 780 CMR 1011 stairways, 1011.12.2 roof access. Roof hatch provided, penthouse required. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. John Moran, attorney for the owners. Madam Chair, we are seeking two building code variances.
So Mr. Moran, so, excuse me, Mr. Moran, you heard what I asked Mr. Anderson, also for, on the building code front. What triggered this? Did this, was this a subject of an appeal before this board? Or is it a renovation?
It is a renovation to provide access to a roof deck, removing an existing staircase in part, retaining a part, and remodeling the bathroom.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
The plans are also good. No questions on the scope. I think it's fairly straightforward.
And this is for roof hatch provision?
That is correct.
Okay, may I, okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, there's a second variance dealing with the width of the staircase.
That is true.
And Mr. Robinson, the, your approval included both?
Yes, sorry, yep, both, both issues are, I think, minimal in terms of their concerns.
Excellent. So, so you're all set, Mr. Moran, on both?
Thank you.
Now I'm going to call the 9:30 cases for any deferrals or withdrawals. If you can give me the address first, please, just deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30. Okay, go with the first case. Calling BOA 1101473473 Meridian Street. This is a change of acres from a two-family, two-and-a-half-story to a four-family, four-story residential dwelling by erecting addition and new rentex. The violation is Article 2070-5, it's in the East Boston I-Pod. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 8, the use is forbidden in an MFR two-family zone. Article 53, Section 9, the excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, the maximum allowed height has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient raya setback. And Article 53, Section 52, the existing roof line, roof profile configuration. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Lins, 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of a petition of Bianca Darkangelo. Madam Chair, the secretary indicated this is a proposal, uh, to preserve and renovate the existing two-family dwelling, uh, located literally, uh, on the last section of the East Boston neighborhood before it gets to Chelsea. Uh, as you can see from the photos here, the property, uh, borders industrial site to the rear. Uh, our proposal would involve a complete rehab and rehabilitation of the building while preserving most of the existing structure and upgrading the life safety. Uh, the unit sizes, uh, would be, uh, two two-bedrooms and two three-bedrooms, consistent with, uh, the comments that we typically hear in the neighborhood about, uh, the size of the units being proposed. The three bedrooms are a little over eleven hundred square feet and the two bedrooms are roughly nine hundred sixty, nine hundred eighty square feet. This is located at two F, two thousand district, uh, so therefore relief on Article fifty-three would be necessary for the changes that we are proposing. Uh, specifically with respect to the use, a four-unit dwelling is forbidden in the two F district, so therefore variance to change this to a multi-family, uh, is necessary. I would point out from, uh, a view of the neighborhood, uh, this is not the only multifamily in the immediate vicinity, so this would not be a use that is inconsistent or incompatible with the surrounding uses. The lot area is sufficient as two thousand square feet is required, twenty-two hundred fifty square feet presently exists.
Counselor, can you tell us how the, because I can see the rooftop addition. Can you tell us how that fourth unit is being accommodated? Is there any occupancy in the basement?
There is no occupants in the basement, Madam Chair. Um, the basement itself will remain as, uh, storage and utilities only. Uh, each of the units, uh, would occupy one level, uh, and as you can see from the, uh, existing elevations, this is a, essentially a two-and-a-half-story would be filling out that third level or that half-story and then propose the addition to, to the, to the level above. We're not proposing any roof deck. Uh, we do propose rear decks, uh, to the back of the building, uh, as well as the addition.
And is there parking currently provided on site?
There is not any parking currently, uh, as a pre-existing condition. Uh, Article fifty-three only requires parking for additional units being proposed. So therefore, in this instance, based upon the calculation under table N, we would only be required to provide two additional parking spaces to comply. Uh, however, uh, based upon the configuration of the lot, uh, it would be difficult, if not impossible, to include off-street parking for this site.
Thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the plans are, are good. The confirmation, there's no, uh, basement units or roof decks. Uh, just one question for counselor. So there is a rear addition being proposed. Can you just, uh, confirm sort of the rear yard setback as it currently exists and the proposed? Just so we're all on the same page.
Sure, Mr. Robinson. So this is already a pre-existing, um, uh, non-conforming condition on the rear yard. Um, we are, uh, operating under a shallow lot exception. The depth of this lot, uh, would permit a reduction, the thirty-foot required setback. We are reducing it down to, I believe, the total setback is a little over eleven feet. Uh, however, the, uh, actual requirement would be thirty, but with the setback, um, being reduced under the exception of Article fifty-three, I believe sixteen feet is the actual requirement. So we're just, uh, slightly under the, uh, setback requirement. Uh, from the photos, Mr. Robinson, you can see that the condition or the impact on the rear yard is minimal. Uh, there is a very large industrial site, uh, to the rear, so there isn't, uh, really a lot of impact, uh, from, from this proposed addition.
Uh, thank you. And, and I think just for the board, you know, the rear yards vary along that street. Some are a little bit bigger, some are a little bit smaller as well. No further questions, thanks.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, with no record in support of this proposal. During the community process conducted by our colleague, uh, the applicant worked with the butters to address many of their concerns. Our office ultimately received twenty-seven letters of support. Thank you.
Hey, Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Oh, Madam Chair, sorry, secretary here, we do have letters of support. We also have a couple of letters of opposition. The opposition is the size of the project.
Okay, any representation from the city councilor's office?
Yeah, Mr. Madera, uh, not the city council, but the, uh, state rep.
Okay.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board, Michael Venetti from the Office of Boston City Councilor, Lydia Edwards. We are staying neutral on this, um, this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe I may have someone in the chat that's looking to speak. Let me just check in with her. Matilda, are you looking to give? Hi, have you been unmuted? Are you looking to give testimony on this project?
Yes, hi, my name is Matilda Harari and I'm wishing to, uh, make a testimony in opposition to this project.
Can you give your address, please?
Yes, I am representing four seven one Meridian Street and I am also here with the landlord of four seventy-five Meridian Street and we are all in opposition to this proposed project.
And can you tell us briefly as director butters, why or what the opposition is based on?
Yep, we are in direct, um, opposition as current residents and representatives of the landlord, um, due to the proposed size of the project. The area already suffers with lack of parking availability and this would just add to the problem. In addition to this proposal project, it is too big for the area in our neighborhood. The construction vehicles around the area already take so much space on our streets. Our neighborhood has already been negatively impacted by the projects that are built in our area. The taxes in our areas have already risen and have become a burden to the existing.
Thank you. And is Vanessa related to you? I see another hand raised with Vanessa.
Yes, she, um, is another resident in the address.
And are you guys related on the same building?
Yes.
Okay, so may, may I just track, uh, Ms. Ambassador, can you please check in with Leila just to see if she's in another building?
Yep, Leila, I'm sorry, um, you've been unmuted. You also stand, reside in the same building? Are you looking to give testimony?
Oh, sorry, I'm on Oak Ridge Street.
Oh, yeah, okay, so, um.
Madam Chair, I just want to make a correction. Um, Adrian Madero, state rep, he was on the next project, so I misspoke on that. He did not speak on this project.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, so given that information, um, may I have a motion, please? Well, this is.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to approve. I, I mean, I understand, I, I hear the director butters, but.
I'll second that motion, secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, motion carries.
Joe, that's with design review.
Yeah, 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 that's definitely, yeah, definitely. The design of the building's pretty nice, but.
Uh, I, 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 and just for the record, I am going to, um, put myself, uh, in opposition. Um, so, um, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one two four four seven three one six Chelsea Terrace. This is construction of a single-story greenhouse associated electrical and water services and ground loop geothermal heating and cooling. The violation is Article twenty seventeen T dash five, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article thirty-two, section four, this is G card applicability. Article fifty-three, section fifty-six, off-street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-three, the rear yard, Article fifty-three, section nine, rear yards insufficient. And Article eighty-nine, section four, urban farm ground level. Name and address for the record, please.
Alex Gray, I'm with six Chelsea Terrace.
So tell us briefly what you're proposing to do?
So we are a neighborhood nonprofit that run, uh, urban gardens and we are proposing to build a greenhouse so we can operate year-round instead of just the growing season, April to November.
And tell us what's the square foot of the proposed greenhouse?
So I have our architect on here, like Gabriel Sierra, if you would unmute yourself.
Hi, Gabriel Sierra here, um, one eighty-nine Hamilton Street, Cambridge, Massachusetts, architect for the.
What about, what's the square footage approximately?
Uh, square footage approximately is, um, is fifty times thirty-three point five, so.
You're asking me to do math?
Excuse me.
Yes, so tell us.
There you go, hot fifteen, fifteen hundred square, sorry.
How much is it?
About fifteen hundred square feet.
Fifteen hundred square feet, okay. Um, and I'm assuming, am I correct in assuming that you will not have members of the public going in? Just need to clarify that, in fact, um, there's enough parking or whatever else, uh, should there be public visitors to the greenhouse?
Um, we're hoping to welcome members of the public to the greenhouse. Um, so this is, this is part of our proposal, um, that this would be year-round, um, space for people to come and learn about, um, gardening and, uh, planting and, uh.
Um, Mr. Gorora, can you tell us, tell us about loading? What kind of loading are you anticipating for this greenhouse and supporting activities?
This is actually, the, the architect will, will speak on that.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Chair, do you want to get Mr. Semenelli from Boston Water on this, a G card?
Uh, yes, uh, just, just since I do have a question floating, may I have a, um, a response, please, on the loading, what the.
Sure.
Loading is?
Yeah, Gabriel Sierra, we have provisions for loading and unloading at temporary parking, um, on the driveway space without obstructing any site uses, um, if, if need be.
Okay, go ahead, Christian. Christian, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Water Trust, and we have both the Boston Water and Sewer Approval and No Harm Letters.
We also have them, Madam Chair, secretary.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Robinson, using your deep knowledge of greenhouses, tell us how are the plans?
Plans look good. Um, are, just one quick question, are the billboard, um, is that on your site or is on the adjacent site?
There are two adjacent billboards, um, on two different adjacent sites.
Ah, okay.
Okay.
Either, got it, okay, great, no, no questions. It's pretty straightforward in terms of.
Excellent. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, with no record in support of this proposal. Uh, during the community process, the applicant met with the Eagle Hill Civic Association and the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association, received support from both of those. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Michael Venetti from the Office of Boston City Councilor Lydia Edwards. Uh, the council would like to offer her strong support on this project. Um, Easty Farms has been and continues to be a great friend and neighbor to the East Boston community and the council is happy to offer her strong support.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have a letter from Representative Madera in support of this and we also have a couple of support letters.
Okay, Ben, Chair, oh, go ahead.
Okay, no.
Madam Chair, I believe there was a comment from the BPDA on this.
Yes, Madam Chair, Jeff Hampton, uh, we recommended approval with design review. Uh, we had, you know, just the proximity to the abutting properties is what we were concerned about for, uh, the design of the building, but we are in favor of this project, so I'll leave it at the discretion of the board.
Thank you. In the meantime, have we heard from everybody who has raised hands?
Not yet. I'll start with, um, Kanan. You've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Anan, Furu Vengadam, two thirteen Webster Street, East Boston.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm the director of Easty Farm and, um, we are designing this aspirational project to be an example of a twenty-first century project that shows the power of clean energy and creates economic opportunities for people who very much need them while also growing food and connecting people to fresh food that's local. So I'm, I'm obviously in support.
So ho- hold on, what does clean energy mean? There's no, um, it's, it's just passive solar, then?
Oh, no, it's, uh, we have geothermal where, in the winter time, instead of using propane to warm up the greenhouse, we're using geothermal, which does not involve fossil fuels. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, and Leila, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
No, I'm waiting for Oak Ridge Street, sorry.
Thanks, can you lower your hand? All right, Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands.
May I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, with BPDA design review.
I'll second that motion, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I think the goal is to, um, pull it back a little bit from the rear yard. Um, Mr. Hampton, yes, okay.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA one two three eight two three two seventeen Upton Street. There is a companion case with building code, case BOA one two three eight two three five seventeen Upton Street. This is for seventeen Upton exterior work to include construction of two rear decks and roof deck. The violation is Article sixty-four, section nine point four, townhouse, rowhouse extension, the building code. Exterior work to include two rear decks and roof deck. The ninth edition seven eighty CMR ten eleven stairways, ten eleven point one two point two roof access, where a stairway is provided to a roof. Access to that roof shall be provided through a penthouse complying with section one five one zero point two. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mark Lacass, Lacasslaw, seventy-five Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant. Also on the hearing is Peter Georgantis, who is the proponent and developer of this project. Shall I do the building code item first, Madam Chair?
Please.
So the building code item is related to access to the proposed new roof deck. The citation is where a stairway is provided to a roof, access shall be provided through a penthouse complying with the building code. However, both Article sixty-four, section thirty-four of the South End Zoning Code and the South End Landmark District Commission Regulations, uh, require that access be through a hatch. So the plans show a hatch for access to the roof deck and, uh, because of that, we need a building code variance for the hatch access.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
We are all good with the proposed building code review.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, the zoning code item relates to the addition of two rear balconies on the first and third level of the building. Shown here on the screen is on the right-hand side, the typical balcony extending six feet from the rear facade of the building, supported by cantilever beams, um, under Article sixty-four.
Brackets?
Uh, yes, they're supported with, um, well, they're actually supported by beams that protrude from the building itself, so it's the same effect, um, actually takes up less space.
Okay, um, and tell us about the roof deck?
Uh, the roof deck was not an item cited on the zoning code refusal as it complies with the restricted roof structure restrictions, um, but it is a typical roof deck that will be set back on all sides, uh, to comply with the South End Landmark Guidelines and is approximately three hundred sixty square feet, um, in size. And you can see there's the hatch on the right-hand side of the drawing shown for access to the roof deck.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no questions.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes, um, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Kim Fusili from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. No opposition was shown at the butters meeting held by our office on September first. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Fling's office.
And I'm sorry, you've, you've broken up, we can't hear you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, while we're trying to get Anna back on, we do have one letter of opposition.
And what is it based on?
They're opposed, they're opposed to the roof deck and the construction process.
Okay.
Good morning.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Madam, Madam Chair, were you unable to hear my testimony?
No, we lost you in the halfway through.
Oh, um, the council would like to go on record in support based on feedback from neighbors and the Union Park Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Ambassador, are we all set?
Yes, we are. No raised hand at the moment, thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one two four seven nine four eight eighty to one oh four West Broadway. This is to preserve, preserve the facade of the existing Amryne's building, demolishing the existing building and construct a new five-story office of R and D, general office and product development prototype with ground floor restaurant and retail use, below-grade parking. Violation is Article sixty-eight, section seven, R and D, R and D product prototype is forbidden. Article sixty-eight, section twenty-nine, roof structure restriction. Article sixty-eight, section thirty-four point one, conforming with the existing building alignment. Article sixty-eight, section thirty-four point two, the traffic visibility across the corner. Article 68, Section 34.1, conforming with the existing building alignment, Article 68, Section 34.2, the traffic visibility across the corner, Article 68, Section 7, the restaurant, number 37, it is conditional, Article 68, Section 7, the general office is forbidden, Article 68, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, Article 68, Section 8, the building height is excessive in feet, Article 68, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient, and Article 68, Section 8, the rear yard is insufficient, name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Jared Igerman, Ruben Junius and Rose with me is Architect, uh, James Gray and the owner, John Madison. Uh, just two points before I turn it over to the architect, first to clarify, uh, we would request that a proviso be added if the decision is granted, that expressly forbids, uh, laboratory space. Uh, you probably have a letter from the West Broadway Association. There's no laboratory space and therefore no laboratory penthouse proposed. The second point, you just saw the picture, uh, in working with the community, the facades, uh, of the old Amryne's Building will be retained. They'll be propped up and, uh, preserved and the rest of the building built behind it. Those are the two points I wanted to, uh, emphasize before we went for, thank you.
So, so let me get clarification. What's the difference for all of us, so we can understand? What R&amp;D product prototype, what's different than labs, and, and do you mean manufacturing labs? What do you mean by labs?
Yes, uh, a, a lab would be, uh, sometimes it's called life science or biotech. Uh, there would have to be special air handling, uh, laboratory space, uh, also has large exhaust on the roof. So, for example, and they, the penthouses often cover more of the roof than the third that we're asking for, a third is the normal for an office building, this will not have that. Prototype, prototype development from experience with in other locations, uh, it, sometimes we have office users that need to, uh, develop a, a, a test product. Two examples I've, I've seen, um, over in Four Point Channel, we had a helmet, uh, company, that they were doing supplies for, uh, the U.S. Army, and they would make some sample helmets, another one downtown, um, on, uh, Liberty Square, I had a client, and it was a lighting company out of Canada, and they had to do LED, you know, LED samples on site, and oftentimes it's not clear to the plan checker that that's accessory to office, so that's all we're trying to do here, that's the difference, but there's a separate category for basic lab under, uh, uh, South Boston zoning, and that would be forbidden. When we went to the B.P.D.A. board, they expressly said we would have to come back for that, we're not proposing it. Um, so that's why we suggest the proviso to make it clear, it's not a lot.
So also for further clarification, so these, this product prototype use is viewed as accessory to the general office?
Well, it, it can be, but again, the experience I had, especially over in Liberty Square, is the plan checker isn't sure because they have, they, they often make something, they were actually making LED lights, not, not a huge number.
For example, you know, they could have their main office somewhere else, and they could be just developing prototypes at this location, is that what you're suggesting?
Uh, yes, I, I am suggesting it's possible, um, you know, we'd have it, could have a tenant where they're building prototypes, but again, nothing with biotech or viruses or any of that stuff.
Okay, okay.
Uh, that's, that's what's proposed.
Okay.
Madam Chair, it's Jeff.
Yep.
Uh, and even Jay, if you don't mind me chirping in.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, i- if you want to think of wet, wet lab space versus dry lab space, biological, stuff like that.
Okay. Okay, uh, okay, let's then move on to, um, a description of what's proposed, what's the current zoning, and, uh, talk through the violations.
Uh, I'll, I'll speak to that, um, violation, so we need a condition, this is a, uh, this was rezoned a few years ago to multifamily, local, uh, uh, shopping, so on the ground floor, you can do a restaurant, and Amryne's, of course, is a longstanding restaurant, but you need a conditional use permit for the restaurant, so that's the first piece of relief. Then, uh, general office is forbidden, um, so we would need a variance for that. Prototype manufacturing also forbidden, need a variance for that. There are six dimensional, uh, variances sought, uh, the main ones that are obvious is, uh, height, um, F.A.R., um, you know, to, to make it in line with other projects near the subway here on Broadway. This is proposed, uh, at a larger height than the underlying zoning allows.
So, so maybe, maybe the best way to approach this then is to tell us, uh, tell us, take us, tell us which drawing shows this proposed project in context of the abutting uses, because, um, we, we've seen a, a growth spot there in the past few years, and just show us how this fits in contextually.
All right, uh, Architect, uh, which, which drawing would that be to show, especially directly across the street, you may be familiar, you can see it in the rendering there, uh, that's a current, a gas station that was approved at, at about 70 feet. Um, so this would, this would be under 70 feet, of course, you go into high-rise if you go over 70 feet.
So let's look at A Street, um, uh, tell us how this compares to the A Street project, because that is already constructed.
Right, um, uh, i- if, uh, if staff could please, uh, show the A Street rendering, what, what she is at.
Madam Chair, this is James Gray, Stantec Architecture, 311 Summer Street. Uh, we have several, uh, images, that one there shows you the context along A Street looking to the east. The building is, is the last one, the second to last one there on the left. And then there are, if you go back to the very beginning of the slide presentation, you will see it, an aerial view where the building is put into context. The only building in that aerial view that is not yet constructed is the gas station side across the street, but it, which has been approved at approximately the same height as this one, just under 70 feet.
Okay, so, um, please.
There it is, right there, Chair.
To me, that, that, that's what I need to understand is, the building across from A Street, what is the height, uh, what a number of floors, and what are the number of floors you are proposing at this project?
Uh, this project is being proposed as five stories and 69 feet 10 inches, just under 70 feet. And the buildings across A Street are in the mid 50s, I, I have that, for a second, while I look at mine.
So it's four stories across the street?
I believe it is four stories across A Street.
Okay, and how about the?
Five stories across Broadway.
And how about the abutter, uh, behind this project, because that was a fairly new building too?
At 69 A Street, the building behind, this, the building behind us will be five stories as well.
Okay. And, um, okay, and tell us about parking, how is parking, uh, going to be accessed?
Madam Chair, the parking will be accessed from a single curb cut on Broadway, reduced from the current three, and, uh, it will be below grade, and there'll be approximately, well, there will be 25 parking spaces.
25 spaces, and then, um, you're cited for traffic visibility across the corner, ta- talk us through that?
Yes, uh, actually, uh, Madam Chair, in, in my brief, I explained that, that's actually an error, because, uh, there's no setback, uh, required on either, uh, A or Broadway, so the traffic visibility, uh, uh, rule does not apply. Instead, uh, in working with the community, we're proposing an open space, which is set back from Broadway, and that does require a variance, because normally on Broadway, you would build right to the lot line.
Okay, and that's, um, that, that intersection has a traffic light, so, and then tell us about the roof structure restrictions.
Yes, uh, so when the, uh, historically, if many on the board will recall, um, there's a one-third limitation, um, on rooftop, uh, appurtenances for measuring building height, however, in the new, uh, South Boston zoning, there's a 10% limit stated, 10%. So we're asking for relief to go up to the normal one-third, uh, above the 10% by right.
Okay, and, um, where will, will that be, um, accommodated, accommodated in the center of the building so that it's not viewable, uh, visible from the street?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair, absolutely, that was crucial to large project review, it's meant to, for passersby, especially on the street, we don't want them to be seeing the penthouse, maybe a glimpse of it, but it's minimized.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, uh, just quick question, can you just, uh, clarify? You, it looks like you're either widening the sidewalk on A Street or moving the lane over, I'm not sure exactly what's happening, I, obviously you're keeping the Amryne's Building. Um, can you just explain it, because A Street's obviously getting more and more pedestrian heavy, and I just wanted to make sure we understood that.
Yes, uh, James Gray from Stantec Architecture, Mr. Robinson, that we are in fact widening the sidewalk along A Street from about six foot eight inches to about eight feet, and, and that's actually coming from a wider than normal bike lane, so the bike lane stays in the same place, it's about six foot four, and we're taking that 16 inches, and we're giving it to pedestrians.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the board? Mr. Olick, you're very quiet today. Uh, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, before we go there, just, uh, Mr. D'Amico did speak on this?
Yes.
Uh, I just want to make sure that his comments get in for the record. Sorry about that, um. He was speaking about the visibility across the corner. Regards to 80 to 104 West Broad, Broadway, the visibility across the corner can be resolved with the proper signage installed by B.P.D., B.T.D. That was his, uh, comments.
Thank you. Ms. Ambassador?
I have one raised hand, but do we hear from all elected officials?
Oh, can I go now? Um, Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, like to go on record in support, thank you.
Good, good morning, Marang of the Chair Members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Fling's office. The council would like to go on record in support based on a long and true co- public process that included a proponent working in good faith on a number of compromises with neighbors, civic organ- organizations, and the South Boston elected officials, as well as feedback from neighbors in the way, West Broadway Neighborhood Association, who inform us they are also in support of the project, as long as there is an inclusion for lab use at the site, exclusion for lab use at the site, these good faith compromises include maintaining the existing Amryne's Building, lowering the height, creating an outdoor plaza, and gathering a space for the community, and including language which limits the research and development used to alleviate concerns from neighbors. Moreover, the project will create new jobs, opportunities for, for neighbors in South Boston. Again, the council would like to support based on compromises made throughout this process, feedback from neighbors in the West Broadway Neighborhood Association, and the opportunities it will bring to South Boston residents, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of City Council at Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Article 68 went through an extensive community process, and the council's approach has been consistent, uh, to that end. That said, this project is consistent with redevelopment efforts along West Broadway, has gone through an extensive community process, the proponent worked closely with the neighbors, the civil, uh, civic organizations, and elected officials on a number of key areas, such as the historic preservation of Amryne's Building, lowering the height, and importantly, including language to expressly exclude basic lab use to alleviate many neighbors' concerns. Uh, and at this point, the counselor, uh, will leave it to the board, thank you.
And, I do have one raised hand from caller six, um, caller six, 617268, you've been unmuted, are you here to give testimony on this?
Thank you, Marang Ambassador, Madam Chair, good morning, this is Mina Perez, representing the carpenters union. On behalf of hundreds of our Boston residents who want to go on record in support of this project, includes to the development team for outstanding outreach to the community.
I have no additional raised hands.
Oh, um, excuse me, Madam Chair, uh, members of the board, I am here to testify in opposition, um, I rep, my name's James Gallagher, business address of One Boston Place, 37th floor, I represent members of the 445 Condominium Trust. Um, the opposition is very limited, we do support the project.
What is 445 condominium trust, is 445 A Street or 445 West? I guess it's 445, what's that? West Second?
West Second is right around the corner, and it's a, and a bunker, it's right on the other side of 16th and A Street, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Um, and we do, we do support the project in general, and we support the proviso, um, that the applicant has asked for, and we think that had, they have been working, uh, collaboratively with the community. Um, we ask that the proviso include that the exclusion, uh, also applies to conditional supplementary or any accessory use, so there would be no ability to have a expansion into basic laboratory, um, so it's not just that it's prohibited as a primary use, but any of the additional uses, and that if a subsequent owner was to come back, that they would be required to go through the full variance procedure, uh, and not proceed under Article 9, um, with that lesser standard.
Okay, so you're, that, that's a smart, smart idea, no lo- no labs, um, specifically biotechs as a main conditional, um, main accessory or ancillary use?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ambassador, are we good?
Yes.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve with design review and proviso that, um, uh, I guess that no wet labs, uh, be part of the proposal.
And then, maybe no wet labs, um.
As a primary use and a secondary accessory use.
Yeah.
As primary accessory or ancillary use, is there a second?
I'll second that, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 121-5337, 12 to 14 Porter Street. This is seeking to erect a two-family dwelling on two park, with two parking spaces. Violation of Article 10, Section 1, side yard buffering and side yard open space insufficient, Article 55, Section 9, insufficient lot size, Article 55, Section 9, insufficient additional lot area per unit, Article 55, Section 9, excessive F.A.R., Article 55, Section 9, insufficient lot width, and Article 55, Section 9, insufficient lot width frontage, name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, I'm going to recuse myself on this matter of ligress.
Thank you, um, so for the record, this is a, uh, six-member board. Uh, for, for approval, uh, there'll need to be five members in support.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, members of the board, Madam Chair, Attorney Matt Ekel with Drago Escano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street, on behalf of the applicant. Also joining me on the call is Tanya Carrier from Callsta Design, project architect. As mentioned, we are seeking to erect a new two-family dwelling with two parking spaces on an existing vacant lot. Uh, the zoning sub-district of this lot is a 3F 4,000, and the lot size is 2,781 square feet. Uh, in terms of the floor plan and the proposal, both of the, both units are proposed as bi-level units, each containing approximately 1,500 square feet. Uh, there will be two exterior parking spaces, and then in the lower level, we do have a dedicated private storage area for Unit 2, which is located on the second and third story otherwise. And then the remain, uh, the remainder of the lower level is going to be the lower level of Unit 1. That's going to contain living space, a study, a family room, the kitchen, and then, uh, three areaways providing light and air.
Sorry, um, um, echo, um, what does lower level mean? It's not in the basement or below grade, is it?
So this, this, this is the basement, it's the lower level of Unit 1, Madam Chair, because it's a two level, a bi-level unit. Uh, so when I say lower level, I mean lower level of Unit 1, so it is, uh, it is mostly below grade, there are three areaways providing light and air, as well as some additional windows, uh.
So this, this is proposed new construction, right?
That is correct, Madam Chair, it's a big lot.
And you, and, and, you know, you might not have heard yet, but, you know, this, with new construction, this board has, has issues with, uh, uh, approving anything that, uh, may look like its basement, uh, basement occupancy. Um.
Uh, sure, and, and with that in mind, we, we did actually switch the bedrooms from the, from the basement to the first floor. Uh, we did design these both as bi-level units, so we, we tried to, uh, adhere to the board's policies by putting.
Just tell us, what's the floor to cell height in the basement?
But, so there are two, um, excuse me, three egress window areaways, Tanya Carrier, the, the project architect is on the line, she might have the actual floor to. Tanya Carrier, the project architect is on the line. She might have the actual floor to sill.
Yes, yes, this is Tanya Carrier. So the floor to the, to the grade would be five foot six, and our window sills will be at two foot six. So they will be half below grade and half above. We have three feet of the window will be above grade.
Can you, I know that you, Tanya, you do a lot of work with a number of projects in the city. So please, any applicant that you work with, please help get the message out that in new construction, this is absolutely not something this board is, is interested in seeing, so. But go ahead, Mr. Echo, tell us the size of each proposed unit. Is fifteen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So. Sure. So the remainder of unit one will be on the first floor, and that'll contain two bedrooms and two bathrooms. The total unit size is one thousand five hundred and forty-eight square feet. The second unit is proposed to be a bi-level unit on floors two and three, containing just under fifteen hundred square feet at one thousand four hundred and ninety-three square feet. The second floor will contain one bedroom, one bathroom, and living space, as well as a second egress stairwell to the right that you can see on the screen right there. The third floor will contain a master bedroom bath, as well as a rear deck over the living space below. So both units are approximately fifteen hundred square feet.
And how is parking supposed to be accommodated?
So there are two proposed parking spaces to the left of the site, Madam Chair. Even though there's a vacant lot there currently, there is a curb cut. We will be shifting that curb cut from the right to the left, and we're proposing a ten-foot curb cut to accommodate those two spaces.
Okay.
In terms of the violations, they're all due to the lot being slightly undersized. So the minimum lot size is three thousand, and we have two thousand seven hundred and eighty-one square feet. The FAR allowed is point seven. We are proposing a one point zero five, which is fairly consistent with this neighborhood. And lot width and frontage, you're required to have forty-five. We're slightly under there. We're proposing forty-two for each.
Okay.
I'll take any additional questions.
Sure. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. You definitely nailed it on the head. I mean, the entire public living space is in the basement. There are, I'd say, a little bit more gracious light wells for some natural light, but it is true, the majority of the public living space is below, but the bedrooms are on the street level for that. No other questions.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just, what's the square footage of the basement? What's the square footage of the first block?
Sorry, Mr. Bureau, I heard the square footage of the basement. What was the second?
And then square footage of the first block.
So they're essentially mirroring footprints. As I mentioned, unit two does have a dedicated storage area, a separate entrance. So the square footage of the lower level is less. Tanya could probably confirm this, but it's about eight hundred square feet per level, so maybe about, you know, seven hundred, six fifty in the, in the basement for unit one.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, let go record in support of the proposal. The applicant went before the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, zoning subcommittee, and received their support, and we'd like to echo our support as well. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Michael Giordano with City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. Council would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do have two raised hands. Do we have any?
Madam Chair, Secretary, we do have one letter of support.
And I'll start with John and Donna. You've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Actually, I'm having some issues unmuting. You, John and Donna, I'll go to caller fifteen. Five oh eight three six zero, are you going to give testimony on this proposal? You've been unmuted. Caller fifteen. Okay, you have one more person, James Gallagher. Oh, James Zero. James, you can unmute. Can you unmute yourself? James might have stepped off. Okay, I'm having issues with John and Donna's audio, but they did send a message in the chat saying they're in support of ten Porter Street.
And do we know their addresses?
Madam Chair, I believe they're actually ten Porter Street. Our project is twelve dash fourteen, so there are direct abouters still left.
Yeah, the same ten quarter.
And is that the vacant lot or the occupied lot?
They are existing single family, I believe, at the abutting lot to the left.
Okay, you're saying occupied.
Yeah.
We're all set. I am having issues with the other. The other people. Caller fifteen, let me just try you again. Again, caller fifteen, five oh eight three six zero, you've been unmuted. Can you hear me? They're all set, Madam Chair.
Hey, given all that information and given the board's policy, may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with BPDA designer view focusing on that floor plan of the first unit with particular attention to having both common space and bedrooms, and bedrooms on the first level and no bedrooms in the basement, but reworking that floor plan.
So, I'm sorry, Joe, so it's essentially to have the entire unit on the first floor without.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't want to forbid them from having like a playroom or an office space or something like that in the basement. But they need to have some common space on the first level.
Okay.
So a majority of the space, Joe, so I have this right? So a majority of their living space now is in the basement, and you would like to see that reduced?
Correct, correct, and have more of a traditional floor plan.
Okay.
Is there a second?
They do have a. This is Eric. They do have a public room on the first floor. I guess I just want to make sure they call it out as a living room, and I guess I just want to make sure that if that proviso is intact, if they look at this and say, yeah, well, okay, they're meeting that criteria, because there is no bed.
No, I think, I think the goal is to have the kitchen and, and, you know, a, a, a living room and whatever dining space upstairs, but, you know, overfloor space such as a playroom in the basement or an office.
Yeah, got it.
Yep, got it. Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, I'm opposed. I, I am not inclined to support the idea of new construction with any living space where it's five foot six from floor to grade. I mean, that's, that's that's for an average person's height, basically completely underground, and that's not. I don't think we should be approving projects like that. I appreciate Joe's sentiment, but I, I, I'm opposed.
Okay. So motion carries with that proviso. Please, Jeff, make sure that BPDA staff looks at this very carefully and does not let anything slide.
I will. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA one two five two one nine one, twenty-five R and thirty-one R Ashland Street. This companion case, BOA one two five two two zero zero, nineteen to twenty-three Ashland Street. This is twenty-five R and thirty-one R Ashland. This structure is to be one of two main structures on the same lot as nineteen and twenty-three Ashland to construct a new three-story, four-unit residential building, townhouse design, with enclosed parking for each unit. The building shall be known as twenty-five R thirty-one R Ashland Street. The violation of Article sixty-five, section eight, a used townhouse is forbidden. Article sixty-five, section thirty-two, this is in a neighborhood design overlay district, review required. Article sixty-five, section forty-two, two buildings on the same lot. Article sixty-five, section forty-two, the front wall not parallel to the front lot line. Article sixty-five, section forty-two, the sidewall not parallel to the side lot line. Article sixty-five, section nine, the location of the main entrance not facing the front lot line. Article sixty-five, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, the building has excessive in stories. Article sixty-five, section nine, the side yards insufficient. And Article sixty-five, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. This is for nineteen to twenty-three Ashland. Change of occupancy on nineteen to twenty Ashland Street from a two-family to a three-story, three-story, three-family residential dwelling, townhouse design with four enclosed garage spaces and one surface parking space. The violation of Article sixty-five, section two, the conformity with existing building alignment. Article sixty-five, section forty-three, townhouse used is forbidden, extend one, one more unit. Article sixty-five, section forty-two, the front wall not parallel to the front lot line. Article sixty-five, section forty-two, the sidewall not parallel to the side lot line. Article sixty-five, section forty-two, two buildings on the same lot. Article sixty-five, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, the building is excessive in stories. And Article sixty-five, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mark LaCass, LaCasslaw, seventy-five Arlington Street in Boston. If this address is familiar to you, it is because we were last before the board on May fourth of this year with a very different proposal, which included raising the existing historic structure and constructing eight townhouses all in one building. As a result of your decision, and if we could stop at this slide, please, and further consultation with a variety of historic resources, the plan has been completely and substantially redesigned to include, importantly, preservation of the existing structure on the parcel, which is set at an angle and informs a lot of the dimensional violations that you heard Mr. Fortune recite. As you can see in the renderings, the red brick building is the existing structure, which is currently painted yellow, but will be returned to its historic original of red brick. And on the top rendering, there are two additional how, townhouse-style units that are proposed to be connected to the existing brick structure, which would be the three units in the front of the property. Then if we could scroll to.
This, so on nineteen to twenty-three, this is a change the occupancy from a two to a three family.
Yes. Yes, Madam Chair.
How, how is, and the brick building, is that currently a two-family or is that a single family?
It's currently a two. So that, the, the brick building will be one unit, and then the two white ones that you can see to the right of the brick building in the top rendering there will each be one unit. Each of these units will be three-bedroom units and approximately seventeen hundred square feet, and each have their own individual parking spaces.
And is that through a garage or how is it?
Yes, there are garages. Also responsive to the comments and concerns raised by Mr. Ehrlich at our prior hearing, the garages are now essentially invisible, whereas in the prior proposal, there were a lot of doors fronting on Ashland Street. The garages are now tucked around back, and if we get to sheet A one hundred and A one oh one, which is a nice site plan, you understand the arrangement. Stop here, please. So this slide here, the shaded box is the existing historic structure, which is being preserved, and you can see, given its age, it was, it's set sideways such that the front door is on the side of the building, and it's also set on an angle on the lot, which sort of is informed by the curve of Ashland Street. So the new architect that was retained used the format of the existing structure to site the two additional ones at the front, and then also by creating the driveway at rear for the four townhouses in the back, also aligning with the existing historic structure and the two new townhouses in the front, which creates, as I mentioned, most of the dimensional violations that we seek relief from.
Okay, so let's just backtrack for a minute. How large is the lot size and what's the zoning district?
Madam Chair, it's a very large lot for this area. It's a fifteen thousand six hundred seventy-five square foot lot, and the zoning subdistrict is one F seven thousand.
Okay, and your prior proposal, how many units did you propose then?
There were eight units proposed in one large building that assumed raising the historic structure, which is what met with a lot of resistance and yes, so that, that was the, the significant starting point was to change the proposal to include restoration and preservation of the existing structure.
So now you are down to seven units altogether.
Yes, with the corresponding reduction of gross floor area, which is eleven thousand eight hundred forty-five square feet, and that's an FAR of point seven.
Okay, and tell us what's on the rear of the proposed, of the proposed second stack, stack of buildings?
Yep. So again, staying right on the screen is perfect. If you see the large house in the lower right-hand corner, that is twenty-nine Mill Street, and we worked very closely with the residents. There are two families that live in twenty-nine Mill Street. It's a two-family. We've worked very closely with them on the alignment of the buildings on the side of their yard. And that lot, that house has a sort of narrow lot that narrows to a neck sort of toward the adjacency of the four rear townhouses, and then their rear lot opens up significantly. As you can see, there's a lot of trees behind those four townhouses. That's in part the rear yard of twenty-nine Mill Street, and they are in support and have submitted letters of support to this proposal.
Okay, so on, on that note, what is required for a rear yard and what are you proposing?
The required rear yard setback from the rear lot line is fifty feet, and at the closest point of the townhouses to the lot line is four feet.
Is four feet, okay. And how about at that location there, the side yard?
So the side yard requirement is twelve feet, and the side yard of the uppermost townhouse along the rear is three feet.
And that's the edge that abuts Mill Street property?
No, that's the edge that abuts the property at seventeen Ashland.
And how close? So that's three feet?
Yes, that's the larger building shown on the upper part of the screen, which has recently been renovated. It's a historic structure renovated into four dwelling units, and that's the rear yard of that property at the edge of the townhouse.
And can you, can you please tell us what, what, what sheet we should be looking at to see, see the renderings of that rear building, those real set of buildings?
Yes. Scroll here. So similar in style and character of the front buildings, which were mirroring the historic brick structure, so to the rear buildings, but for the fact that their garage doors are at the ground level for the entrance of the parking spaces. And then on here, yes, so there's the front on Ashland Street, scroll down just a little bit so we can see the next, sorry, next slide. It's hard to soup. Nope, the elevations, please. Yes. So they have the peaked roof style similar to the townhouses in the front, which is an important defining characteristic of the historic structure that we were asked to adhere to. And that's the rear elevation of the four townhouses.
And where is the proposed surface parking?
Yes, if we go back to slide A one oh one, please, sheet A one oh one. Stop right here. You can see there's one small parking space off to the side, right there. That's the ninth space. The others are all contained within the townhouse buildings.
Okay.
Four in the front, four in the back, and one surface spot there on the edge of the driveway. And that brought us up to compliance with the parking requirement for the subdistrict.
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson? Um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good, I think we can see pretty clearly what, what the proposal is. No questions on the, the plans themselves.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. LaCass is where, I mean, you've gone from eliminating a historic building to keeping it, but now with additions. Where is that in relation to landmarks?
Yes, so we've worked very closely with the Boston Preservation Alliance. And solicited their feedback and input and they informed the architect, Zephyr Architects, who works with a lot of historic properties. In terms of the process for further design review, this is in a neighborhood design overlay sub-district. So, uh, design review pursuant to that provision with the BPDA will be required. And the article eighty-five process was that they imposed the ninety-day demolition delay. And strongly encouraged us to come up with an alternative to demolition, which is what we have done here.
Okay, but I mean, I guess I'm just trying to figure out the sequence of things. Is it premature for us to act on this without the completion of their review?
No, in fact, the landmarks commission is not empowered to act on final applications until the zoning issues have been resolved.
Yeah, well, okay, I'm aware of that, but I am just curious as to where they are in their, in their process.
So we have continuing dual, dual reviews required, Mr. Ehrlich, we have the N D O D with the BPDA. And we have further landmarks commission review as well as part of our pending open article eighty-five process.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Wynn at the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted a rebuttals meeting for the applicant on April twenty-sixth of this year. At the meeting and through emails, several neighbors voiced concerns regarding the proposal. Detailing the fast-changing nature of their neighborhood. From single and two-family homes to multiple condos and townhouses, as well as the elimination of green space. Nevertheless, we also received letters of support regarding the proposal with the redesign, including slight reduction in size. So at this time, our office would like to go on record in support with BPDA design review, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office, we'd like to go in support of this project.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have letters of support, we also have letters of opposition, the opposition is basically the project's too big.
All right, and Madam Chair, we have quite a few hands raised, I'll start with Stacy, you've been unmuted, Stacy, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, Stacy Toomey, thirty-eight Mill Street, I oppose due to the density and the three-foot, uh, four-foot side. Side and rear setbacks that set the precedent for the abutting properties, which are also marketing to developers.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Toomey, what's your address?
Thirty-eight Mill Street.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, Michael Sheehan, two seventy-six Adams Street. I represent the owners of the property that fifteen seventeen Ashland Street. Uh, Sturdivan Park LLC, I just wanted to comment on one of Mr. LaCass's comments, he made. Reference that we turned it into a four-unit house, we did not, it was always four units, we did not see to increase the units. I think you just need to look.
So, um, can you tell us whether, Mr. Sheehan, if you're in support or in opposition?
We're opposed to it, we, we provided a letter, we think it's too much, we think that house they're putting in the rear. It's a subdivision of a lot to create a new house with all kinds of violations of the zoning code. And it busts right up to our property and will deny the residents there of light, of privacy and of our much-needed green space. They're concerned about runoff by taking up all that green space there. And we're, we're adamantly opposed to this. We have, we spoke to the developer, the very first proposal well over a year ago. And since then, we've had no communications with them at all. We like to talk to, we're not against the redevelopment of the lot, we're not against adding more units, but this is way too much. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Thank you, and for other people who are going to speak either in support or in opposition. Please give us new information after you put your name and address on the record. And for those who have already spoken, please lower your hands.
And then go with Megan next, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, hi, this is Megan Quinn Mueller, I live at twenty-nine Mill Street. I'm an owner and resident, we've lived here for seven years. We are a significant direct rebutter of the proposed project site because, as you mentioned, our, our property wraps around nineteen Ashland on two full sides. Um, we are in support of the project, we've met with the developer a few times, we've gone through. The units he's proposing is comparable to other units that have, the number of other units that have been approved in other. Projects in our neighborhood.
Thank you, thank you, please lower your hand.
Thank you, all right, and I have a caller twelve, who has a six-one-seven-two-four-zero number, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, good morning, my name's Elizabeth Jackowitz, I am the owner and resident, lifelong resident of thirty-one Mill Street. Uh, Dorchester, I am supportive of this project and as the other rebutter Megan just said. Uh, the developers have been, you know, very open with the rebuttals and. Um, I believe they're doing a good job and I support the project.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Levon, you've, uh, been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, Levon Ponak, it's thirty-eight Atonia Street, Alston. And I've worked security at numerous venues in Alston, Brighton, I just wanted to say I've driven by the building countless times and can't really think of more.
Mr. Ponak, we're in, in Dorchester, on Ashland Street in Dorchester?
And we've gotten to everyone, we're all set, thank you.
Okay, so given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
Can I ask a question of Jeff Hampton at the BPDA, uh, cause they recommend deferral of this. Can we just get a little clarification on that?
Sure, uh, Jeff Hampton, BPDA, we did, uh, recommend deferral, I think last time we recommended deferral as well because of the landmark issue. But right now, the, the neighborhood planners for Dorchester have stuck with their deferral. Because we still want to wait for the landmarks.
So it's only because of landmarks, it's not because of density or rear yard or any of that?
No, this is for landmarks review.
I think, I think the density and everything else is in, in our lap, Eric.
Yes, ma'am, I agree.
Yeah, so I, 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 I think I kind of hear. Some reluctance on this project, what am I hearing, can I have a motion from somebody? Because it, it may be a reduction in density from eight to seven units, but that doesn't mean it's, it's landed in the right place.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I certainly feel a reluctance and I, uh, and would prefer to, uh, to see how landmarks, uh, comes, comes out of it. It's, it's still pushing the boundaries on density and, and I think they need to, uh. Uh, I mean, I hate kicking the can down the road, that, that's not what we usually do here, but I, I think I would.
Uh, like, the, 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 the only decision landmark is going to make is likely on that front building. And I think, you know, for me anyway. Uh, red flags went up when I saw that the side yard was, uh, three feet to the property line. And the rear was four, uh, for that, for that last unit, that edge unit, so. You know, we can do two things, I guess we can do. Couple of things, approve it, or second, deny it without prejudice. And have it walk its way back up again.
Well, I, I'm, I'm of those options, I'm inclined to, to not make a motion to deny without prejudice, that would also give. It gives the proponent time to potentially reduce the density somewhat. And also for landmarks to weigh in on the, uh, on the original building, so that's my motion.
Is there a second?
I, I'll second that as well, and you know, I think just to sort of, by way of comment, I do think. The, the Ashland Street, you know, I think that's been a great improvement from before. I, I just am uncomfortable with the four rear units as well, related to density, so I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So mo, uh, motion carries, it's been denied without prejudice, thank you.
Madam Chair, it's now eleven eleven, I'm going to call the eleven o'clock hearings for any deferrals or withdrawals for eleven o'clock only. If you have any deferral or withdrawal for eleven o'clock, give me the address first, please. Hearing none, I'll go back to the nine-thirty cases, calling the next two cases, calling BOA one-two-zero-three-three-zero-two-fifty-six Oak Ridge Street. There is a companion case, BOA one-two-zero-three-three-zero-four-sixty Oak Ridge Street, this is for fifty-six Oak Ridge. This is demolish the existing single-family erected three-family dwelling with three parking spaces at the rear of the building. Violation of article sixty-five, section eight, the three F, one F, uh, is forbidden. Article sixty-five, section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, lot width is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, lot frontage is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And article sixty-five, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. This is for sixty Oak Ridge. This is erected three-family dwelling and three parking spaces in the rear. Madam Chair, the violations are identical for both projects, so I'm not going to call them back in. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Excuse me one second, Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself in this matter.
Okay, Mr. Legris has recused himself. Um, therefore, the applicant needs to know that, um, that they need five, five supports for this to proceed.
Yes.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Derek Joyner, Joyner Development, one nineteen B Rentham Street, Dorchester, Mass. I'm proposing to erect a three-family with three off-street parking spaces and a one F six thousand zoning sub-district. The use forbidden, I know, despite that the, the forbidden use is a three F and a one F sub-district. There are seven multi-families on that street, including the three-family. So we've created a design to fit well with the style of the existing homes. And the lot area is insufficient, but it's non-conforming. It's six thousand square feet is the required minimum and we have fifty-five hundred square feet. The lot width is insufficient at sixty, which is the required minimum, we have fifty feet. And the lot frontage is insufficient, it's at sixty and it's required, uh, the required minimum is, is sixty feet and we have fifty.
So we understand that those are because it's, 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 um, because of the, the design of the lot. So can you talk about, so you've talked to us about the three-family. You're telling us that even though this is a one-family district zoning-wise. Um, it's contextual in that there are other multi-families. But then please talk about the height and stories, the floor area ratio and the rear yard.
So the floor area ratio is at five, five point five, uh, that is the required max, we have point seven four. The building height, um, it's at two and a half stories is the required max and we're at three. The unit information, uh, these will be condominium units and unit one will consist of thirteen hundred and ninety-one square feet. Which in, uh, includes two bedrooms, three bathrooms. And it will include a family room in the basement with the ceiling height of eight feet. Unit two will consist of one thousand forty-nine square feet and it has two bedrooms with two bathrooms. And unit three will consist of one thousand, one hundred and six square feet. And it has two bedrooms and two bathrooms and all the ceiling heights in each of those units would be nine feet. Now, these condominium units will be.
Hold on, tell us how the parking is proposed to work?
There is a driveway. If we can go to this, the second page. Yeah, there we go, back up, there we go, so there is a driveway and there will be three off-street parking spaces. One for each condo unit. And there's, um, a lot of green space, more than what's required in the zoning. And we meet all the side setbacks on each side and we meet all the front setbacks on both and we meet the rear setbacks.
And is there a proposed roof deck?
There's no roof, Madam Chair.
Okay, and is there going to be a proposed shared driveway or are these separate driveways?
Madam Chair, these are separate driveways on both properties.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no questions on the scope, there is some living, uh, space shown in the lower level. But it, it is designated as family room, no bedrooms. No other questions regarding the proposal.
And again, Madam, I'd like to say that these will be condominium units and they will provide homeownership opportunities. And I'm willing to, uh, market one unit eighty percent of the market value. And I mentioned that to the city councils and I'll go on record and make that statement.
Okay, um, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes, hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dante Peoples here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. First, uh, there was an rebuttals meeting held by, uh, our office on July twenty-first. Were concerns of, uh, parking, non-conformity of structures, um, of new structures as they are, you know, three families. In a one-family district, uh, densing in the area, as well as the concern of large oak trees, uh, that would have to be taken down to construct fifty-six Oak Street. Um, Oak, Oak Ridge Street, which is actually, uh, has come to my attention, is being, um, looked at for demolition. Delay review by the Boston Landmarks Commission, um, which is going on right now and the hearing should be, uh, later this month. Um, and the applicant will go by, uh, all requirements needed. Um, under some more, you know, things going on are, uh, tree canopy as well as, uh, habitat loss. Have been all concerned on July twenty-first, uh, there are additional meetings held by the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council. And Lower, Little Mills Civic Association, uh, Greater Mattapan on August nineteenth and September sixteenth, uh, of this year. And the Lower Mills, uh, October seventh, as well as October nineteenth, um, these meetings did result in letters of opposition from the civic groups. Um, here at the Mayor's Office, we would like to highlight that the applicant did reach out. And remain available to the community as well as provide the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council with a construction plan, geotech report, as well as Boston Sewer. And water, uh, design report, uh, the applicant also did receive letters of support. That should be on file, which addressed subjects such as, uh, affordable homeownership opportunities. Uh, but at this time, the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in opposition, thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, behalf of City Councilor Andrea Campbell's office. Uh, we'd like to go on record, uh, in a neutral position on this one, we've received both support and opposition. Just want to echo sentiments of the Mayor's Office, there were many meetings, uh, I know that the, the bedroom count was decreased. To accommodate some of the concerns about density on the street, but the, there's still outstanding concerns about the overall. Size and scale of the project in comparison that wasn't addressed. And we'd also like to recommend deferral for fifty-six, given the pending landmarks, uh, process, so. Uh, that's our position on this.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have letters of support and opposition.
And, Madam Chair, we have quite a few hands raised, um.
If, if there are, if there are members of the same family, uh, with raised hands, can one person please bring their hand down? So that we can hear, um, from, um, a wider array of residents. Um, in the meantime, let's go ahead, Miss Ambassador.
Okay, I'll start with Elizabeth Kelly, Elizabeth, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, yes, my name is Elizabeth Kelly from.
Can you speak up, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Uh, you're a little low.
Is that, can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's a little better.
Okay, um, my name is Elizabeth Kelly, I'm from fifty-two Oak Ridge Street, Mattapan, Mass, zero-two. My name is Elizabeth Kelly. I'm from fifty-two Oak Ridge Street, Mattapan, Mass, zero two one two six. I am the uphill abutting neighbor. I'd like to speak in opposition. I believe that even with the reduction in the bedrooms, this is quite a seriously large additional occupancy to the side of the street, and I don't believe the parking is sufficient. I'm also honestly concerned about the amount of noise that having the parking spaces in the back will cause on my property, given that there's always been echoing from that backyard. Even if folks were outside having a quiet party, you could hear it throughout my house.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Sharon, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sharon Butler, thirty-nine Ellison Ave. I believe the proposed condominium units will provide homeownership opportunities. It will not adversely affect the community. In fact, I think it will not create any sort of detriment as well. I'm directly in back of the property, and I think it would be a great asset to the community. There's a shortage of housing, and I am full supporter of this project.
Thank you. Mark, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mark Brunkie, forty-eight Oak Ridge Street. I am next door to Elizabeth. I'm two doors up from the project. I oppose the project. I oppose the demolition of fifty-six Oak Ridge Street, which is a fine historic home. I believe the density is far exceeds what the neighborhood can absorb for these two, three families.
Thank you.
Thank you. Leela Silverstein, been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Leela Silverstein. I live at forty-seven Oak Ridge Street. I think this proposal is way too population dense. One car per condo is insufficient. Where would the other cars go? We have tried to work with this developer. He has been unwilling to work with us to reduce the number of units. I oppose the demolition of number fifty-six. It is a historic building. We'd like to preserve it.
Thank you. I think that conversation, the demolition, is in another venue, but thank you. And everybody who's spoken, please lower your hands. And when you, you have a chance to speak, give us new information, please.
Brian Sullivan, yep, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Brian Sullivan. My address is forty-nine Ellison. I am direct to butter to the proposed demolition of the oak trees at sixty, and then fifty-six obviously is next door to that. I won't repeat what my other neighbors have said, but I will mention that trash management hasn't been taken into consideration, trash and rodents. If it's three units each, does that mean three big trash cans and three recycling bins? If you're already trying to fit a large house onto a small lot, is that a dumpster? And then there are runoff issues.
Thank you.
The only other thing I would like to say is that the driveway is directly to the property line. That is nowhere else in this neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Brian, are you representing, are you with Brenda Sullivan as well?
I am not with her. She's my mother, but we do not live in the same property, in the same address.
Do you want me to keep going, Madam Chair?
Please.
Okay, all right, Brenda, go ahead. You've been unmuted. Actually, I have an issue with unmuting Brenda.
Can I have the call-in user, please?
Yep. Right, caller three, six one seven eight three three, you've been unmuted. Hi, caller three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I would like to buy my support for the Oak Ridge Street, number fifty-six and sixty project. My name is. Beadland Reed. I am at thirty-five Ellison Avenue.
Thank you. I believe that's all of the raised hands. People have not lowered their hands yet. Sorry, let me get to, Thomas, did I get to you?
Not yet.
No, go ahead. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Thomas Maestros, from forty-nine Adams Street. I'm a member of the, a board member of the Lower Mills Civic Association. I wanted to reiterate that the Civic Association had met several times, and Mr. Joyner had proposed on several different occasions that he modify his plans to be in conformance with the underlying zoning. He has stated that there are multiple three families in the area, but there are not. It is a predominantly single-family neighborhood and remains so. We have stated to him on numerous occasions that the precedent set by allowing for three-family properties in single-family district, both of which are non-conforming, creates, puts a lot of stress on the existing structures.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Maestros. Can we, one more person, please, and let's close comment.
Okay, Agnes, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good morning, everyone, and good morning, Madam Secretary. My name is Agnes Martin. I live on forty-three Oak Ridge Street. My, I have many concerns, but my biggest concern is that we are well aware of climate change, change, and deforestation. And Mr. Joyner Development is proposing to cut down two over one-hundred-year-old oak tree on a lot that is too small for the house. The other concern that I have is that the persistent and consistent drilling will affect the foundation of all of our home, which are very older. My house was built in the late eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred, and this has not been addressed.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. So given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to deny without prejudice.
Is there a second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
Who is opposed?
Joe.
I'm sorry?
Joe, Joe's opposed.
Joe, sorry. So motion, motion carries.
Calling the next, calling the next case, calling BOA one two three four seven five seven twelve thirty Soldiers Field Road. This is a change of argument, include research laboratory, includes construction of a new non-structural interior partitions. Violation Article fifty-one, section sixteen, laboratory use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Sean Karen, Harvard Real Estate, Alston Inc., address is thirty-eight Travis Street in Alston, here with Nicole Sims from Stem Express, the proposed tenant. So twelve thirty Soldiers Field Road is located in the Western Ave, Soldiers Field Road Commercial Sub-District. And in that sub-district, research lab is allowed on above floors, but conditionally on the ground floor. And this building is a single.
Calling me, but I didn't answer. Should I call him back before you come up?
Let me get to that, but I'm not sure who that is. All set, thank you.
So twelve thirty Soldiers Field Road is a single-story building, and as I mentioned before, located in a commercial sub-district. So we're looking for approval of this conditional use permit to allow Stem Express to relocate from Arlington to this location on Soldier Field Road. In terms of what Stem Express would do, they collect biospecimens and process them to isolate stem cells and other blood derivatives for distribution to off-site research facilities. There's no viruses or anything of the sort. It is blood and blood processing. So that's the nature of the lab use. The renovation is a minor interior renovation. There would be no adjustments to the structure. There's significant onsite parking already available. Happy to answer any questions.
So basically, all the isolation of these stem cells, all that, is it a manufacturing function then at that point? Since it's a pretty standard process, is that what it is?
Cole, would you be able to answer that question?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead. Your name and address for the record.
Nicole Sims, and I'm actually, I reside in California. So we actually do stem cell manufacturing, but it's not in a clinical biologic space at this point. We manufacture for research and development use only.
So it's manufacturing for R and D. Okay, excellent, that's good to know. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no question. Doesn't appear there's any exterior work, is that correct in the proposal?
That's correct.
Is there, is there rooftop work or any ventilation or anything of that nature being added that's not shown as well?
There's not. We're able to reuse the existing equipment.
Okay, no further questions from me, thanks.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Yes, please go ahead.
Does Harvard own this property?
We do.
Is it part of your master plan?
It is included in the master plan, but will be converted to commercial and put on the tax rolls as part of this.
Okay, so you're going to be taking it out of the IMP overlay district that's on the site, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
How, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services, let go record support this proposal. Mayor's Office conducted the abutment meeting on September seventh, where it was well received by those in attendance. They also went on to the Alston Civic Association, received a letter of support from them as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have one letter of support.
Thank you.
Chair, I have three raised hands. I'll start with Tony. Second, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony Tizadaro, representing the Alston Civic Association, would like to go on record in support.
Yeah. Brenda, you've been unmuted?
I'm very glad.
Oh, she might be from a different case. Let's see, caller six, caller six, six one seven two six eight. Are you looking to give testimony on this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is mine up for us with the carpenters union. On behalf of our Boston residents, would I go on record and support?
Thank you. I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
So I think the question on this is whether we put it to this applicant only, because we have been assured that this is just, it's a manufacturing process, not a true research process.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with two provisos. The first that it's this applicant only, and the second that this part will be removed from Harvard's IMP and put back on the tax rolls in order to be used for this purpose.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Fortune, can we go to, please, the list of recommendations, because it is eleven thirty?
It's very scary, because I was going to do the same thing you're asking me to do.
Man, great minds think alike, and then we'll take a five-minute break, okay?
I don't know about my mind, but yours is okay. Just for, this was the subcommittee hearing, which was heard on Thursday, November fourth, at ten, ten, Mass Ave. Case BOA one two five two zero eight nine three Lexington Street. It was a constructed addition, the rear renovated existing single family. It was approved with BPDA and no building code relief. Case BOA one two three five four five eight eleven Atlantic Street was deferred to twelve nine at five P M. to the subcommittee. Case BOA one two two three six seven one nine O'Connell Road. It was a remodel demo, existing and new deck. It was approved. Case BOA one two five three five seven five fifty seven Thatcher Street. Was change of argument, one family to a two-family. It was approved with BPDA and attention to the roof line. Case BOA one two zero eight four two seven ten sixty-eight Truman Parkway. Was an addition, new kitchen remodel was approved with BPDA. Case BOA one two two five five one three seven Kalamet Street. Was a contracted two-story addition, existing single family. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA one two four four eight two one sixteen Courtney Road. Proposed constructed two-and-a-half-story addition at the rear of the existing structure. It was deferred to the December ninth subcommittee at five P M. Case BOA one two four six seven three two one oh six Westmore Road. Was an addition of techno footings, frame installation, electrical work. It was approved with BPDA. And then the rediscussion was the BOA one one nine four six two zero thirty-three Bartlett Street. It was deferred until the December ninth at five P M. Subcommittee meeting. That concludes the subcommittee. I need a motion.
Motion to accept the recommendation for the subcommittee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's now eleven thirty-six. The board will adjourn and will reconvene at eleven forty-five. Excellent. Mr. Olick?
Howdy.
Okay, Ms. Dong?
President.
Mr. Rogiro?
I'm here.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent, Mr. Legris?
I'm here.
Excellent, and Mr. Hampton?
Wouldn't miss it for the world.
Okay, nice, nice. Okay, let's proceed.
That's the attitude, Jeff.
We've been together for way too long.
Continuing nine, nine thirty cases calling BOA one, zero, three, nine, five, two, one, one hundred, Leo and Birmingham Parkway. This is a change of occupancy from offices to marijuana retailer and marijuana product manufacturer. Violation Article fifty-one, section sixteen. Marijuana retail cannabis establishment use is conditional. Article fifty-one, section sixteen, the marijuana product manufacturer use is forbidden. And Article fifty-one, section sixteen, the cannabis establishment shall be sighted at least one half mile or two thousand, six hundred and forty feet from another existing cannabis establishment. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Pulgeni with the business address, ten Forbes Road in Braintree. With me today is Dwan Packard. She's a longtime Brighton resident and owner, co-owner of the, and major shareholder of Castle Leaf, who is the applicant. Jay Humans, who is our regulatory and policy consultant. Michelle Foley, a cannabis retail expert. Michael McDade, he's the CEO of the current building and owner and founder, co-founder of Castle Leaf LLC, together with Tom Scott from SGA Architects. As Mr. Fortune stated, the proposal is located, um, it's located as the current Galaxy Integrated Technologies Building, which is located at one hundred Birmingham Parkway between Lincoln Street and Mass Bike in Brighton. The property is located in the community commercial sub-district, which allows by condition of use permit for use as a cannabis establishment. This building is an existing seventy-one hundred square feet, and we're proposing using thirty-seven hundred square feet of this building for the retail establishment, eight hundred and sixty-two square feet of commercial kitchen, and sixteen hundred.
I'm sorry, please backtrack. So it's thirty-seven hundred square feet for what?
That is the building, Madam Chair. The lot size is eleven thousand, two hundred and ninety-one square feet.
Okay, and then what's the breakdown on use?
Sure, so, um, the, you, the retail is thirty-seven hundred square feet.
Okay.
All in, eight hundred and sixty square feet, eight hundred and sixty-two square feet for commercial kitchen, and sixteen hundred and five square feet of storage space, including a nine hundred and fifty square foot secure vault.
Okay.
There are seventeen dedicated customer parking spaces located in front of the building with access off Lincoln Street, and additional six parking spaces located in the rear and enclosed, and an enclosed loading dock. Addition, additionally to the parking situation during Castle Leaf's opening plan, staff will be required to utilize off-street parking. And to reduce car dependency going forward, Castle Leaf will be fully subsidizing employee M B T A passes, commuter rail passes, and boot bike subscriptions. Um, if you can see the presentation materials before you, you can see it's a masonry building that is located on somewhat of an island, and it has no windows on the first floor. The proposed hours of operation would be Monday to Saturday from ten A M. To nine P M., Sunday from ten A M. To seven P M. And there will be approximately ten staff members at present on premises at any one time. This proposal went through an extensive two-year community and regulatory process. It's prescribed by the city, and we have submitted nearly eight hundred and forty letters and signatures of support, including the entire Austin-Brighton Legislative Delegation, delegation as well as the B.
You know what? We'll get all that information.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, no, I, I want, I just want to walk through the details of how this facility will work. Tell us, tell us if there's going to be an online presence, an ability to preorder. What is your structure if there are lines, and how will you accommodate that?
I was, I was right there.
Oh.
Madam Chair, with your, with your permission, I'll turn it over to Michelle Foley, who is a member of the team, and she will walk the building circulation and those other issues that you brought up. Michelle?
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair. So, um, so the flow, um, to answer the question, yes, we will have express online ordering. In my experience, that is usually around fifty to sixty percent of the transactions. You know, in, in this space, people, you know, they just want to order online, pick up their products. They want a very quick in-and-out experience, and so that is what we will, you know, provide them, which will also ensure no lines. So we will have express online ordering. Once they arrive, they will pay for, for their product. Typically, those transactions, because they've already chosen the product, they've already paid, I'm sorry, they've already chosen and picked out what they're getting. They're really just coming in to pay. So those transactions are typically less than, than two minutes, if that. And again, because they account for typically fifty percent, that, that those fifty percent roughly is, you know, under two-minute transaction, so that will help with, um, with lines and queuing. And then if we could go back to the, oh, sorry, the floor, the floor plan.
Tell us what she gets.
So you can see here, so there's a separate entrance and exit, and that will ensure a secure entrance. So we will obviously be checking IDs, and you can see we have three security personnel sitting in that check-in booth. So once they get in, we can fit based on the square footage of forty customers in the dispensary. Since we don't anticipate, based on market research, more than twenty in, in an hour, that means we can ensure that, that if, you know, even at full capacity or twenty people, which is what we anticipate, we can fit them inside easily and in the queuing area. And you can see here, we have designated express pickup registers. So as people come in, if they have an express order, they're going directly to those registers, paying, and then immediately exiting through a separate exit. And if they don't have an express order, they're queuing in the center of the, the sales floor.
Okay, so, um, Counselor, what zoning district is this in? Is this C C one?
It is, Madam Chair.
And tell us about the manufacturing use. What does that mean?
Michelle, do you want to just touch on that? Would you, would you let me?
Sure. Um, yeah, I think so. On the second floor, I don't think we have it shown here, but on the second floor, we are planning a commercial kitchen. Um, and oh, I think, I don't know if it's on the, I think it's the one above it. Yep, there we go. So on this floor is the, you can see the open commercial kitchen space, and then there is a second vault on this floor as well. So Jay, I don't know if, if you want to talk about the.
Yeah, absolutely. Madam Chair, Jay Yeomans with Smith, Stella and Crawford, representing the applicant. We'll be looking at a product manufacturing license, which is, I just note, in the state CCC regs, a very broad definition, and so I want to be very specific about what we'll be doing here. This will be solely a commercial kitchen, where mainly what we will be engaged in is repackaging of the existing product. As a standalone retailer, we'll be looking to create our own brands, as well as in partnership with local Austin-Brighton entrepreneurs. So a big element of this business plan is really re-packaging and branding. Repackaging is considered a product manufacturing activity. The only products we would be making on site would be those such as like cookies, brownies, things that you would use a commercial kitchen for. We do not anticipate, yeah, the use of any solvents or other, other kind of chemical activities that you may see in some of these other product manufacturing applications. This is solely a commercial kitchen and repackaging operation.
Okay. Um, okay, I think I've covered everything. Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Plans are pretty straightforward. Um, it doesn't seem there's any accessibility to the second floor. Is that, is that will be all private employee-only use? Is that?
Correct, it would only be.
Yes.
You'd only be able to access it with appropriate security, security badging, so no public entrance whatsoever.
And can you tell us, just one more question, sorry. I just, obviously, this is an exposed parking lot on a very visual corner. You're not appear to be proposing any buffering and screening along that edge. I mean, I see a couple, I'll say minimal kind of things shown, but can you maybe talk a little bit more about that? It's pretty, pretty wide open there on the corner.
Mr. Robinson, there's not going to be any physical work done to the building itself, but there will be, you know, things like that as far as beautification of that area, beautification of the parking lot and screening, buffering that will be, and that will be done as part of this proposal.
Okay, it's just not shown on the plan. There's minimal shown at the entry, but not at the actual Leo Birmingham side or.
If this is approved, then, you know, we could make it subject to the BPDA design review with respect to screening and buffering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services, let go record and non-opposition to this proposal. This is the stance we took when they went before the Cannabis Board. We've received a lot of feedback from the community. We conducted a public meeting on June fourteenth, and since then, heard from a number of residents and support from the broader community. They like that the applicant has longstanding ties to the neighborhood, the existence of on-street park, onsite parking, excuse me, and proximity to Boston Landing. They also secured support from the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association, as well as State Rep. Mike Moran and State Rep. Kevin Honan. We've also heard from a number of residents who are in opposition. They're predominantly in the North Brighton neighborhood, where this site is located, although not above it, it's within three hundred feet. They cite primary concerns, the existing traffic at the intersection, and they're concerned that more traffic will be caused by this application, as well as cut-through traffic that has been an existing problem for a number of years. You know, cars cutting through residential streets in order to make their way over to the pike, as well as the proximity of ports with playgrounds. That information that we presented, we defer to the board. Thank you.
And is this in proximity of another cannabis and approved cannabis operation?
So it's in proximity of the, I think it's two oh four North Beacon, which was approved by the Boston Cannabis Board, but it was rejected by the Zoning Board of Appeals. I believe that might be some type of litigation or mitigation, I should say, with the Superior Court, Suffolk County Superior Court.
Right, so that was sharing the lot with that Dunkin' Donuts up there.
Correct. Yes, Madam Chair. And they also, you should have a letter of opposition from the Austin Civic Association. Seems the applicant and the Civic Association were not able to sync up, and as a result, the ACA has written a refusal, an opposition letter. Thank you.
This is in Austin, not Brighton, though, right? I mean, this isn't Brighton, not Austin, right?
Address would be Brighton.
Hold on, hold on. Um, I see Tony Disidoro is on, so we can hear from him directly.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, this, the, the buffer zone there, the buffer zone that's mentioned isn't, is mentioned, but it's, we didn't approve anything within a half mile. This board hasn't, right?
That is correct, Mr. Joe.
Okay.
Hi, Joe, this is Tom, the Executive Secretary. Just to comment on the litigation piece, it is currently pending before Superior Court this board's denial of two oh four North Beacon Street. It is, however, they do, the two oh four North Beacon Street does still have the conditional, or does still have a license from the V C B, so according to the V C B regulations, it is an existing cannabis establishment, so.
Okay, can I go ahead?
Just for the record, the secretary here, we do have letters of support and letters of opposition.
Yes, is there, are there any elected officials? Because I did see Mike Moran on.
That, that's why I've seen Mike Moran, Representative Moran. I missed, I believe Liz Braden's on, Counselor is on right now.
Yep. Okay, so let's hear from elected officials, please.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. I'm going to be very, very brief. Um, you know, I've been supportive of this location.
So please put, big for audio, please put your name and address on the record.
Uh, okay, uh, for the, for the record, um, my name is Michael Moran. I am the State Representative from the Eighteenth Suffolk District, which, uh, includes, uh, this property at one hundred Leo Birmingham Parkway in Brighton. Uh, I have been a member of the House for eighteen years, and I've represented this neighborhood for eighteen years and this address for eighteen years. I'm, uh, going to briefly to, uh, ask you to, uh, consider supporting this, uh, proposal by Castle Leaf. Um, it is a, it is a strong proposal at a good location, um, and it has, uh, um, all of the support of, um, the local elected officials, uh, in this area. Uh, my, my other colleague, Kevin Honan, as well as Senator Brownsberger, is also supporting this. Um, and we feel that, given its location, its unique location, um, next to the Mass Pike, um, that the impact that this would have on the community would be, uh, relatively small. Um, in addition to that, I want to do underscore, um, the, uh, Dwan Packet, uh, is a, is a, is a resident of Alston-Brighton. Um, she was active in Alston-Brighton long before she, um, she decided to go into this industry. Um, and she is somebody who, as an African-American woman, she, this may not be a, uh, application in, as that, but, uh, I do want to underscore that her involvement in this, uh, makes me feel, uh, a lot better because of my, uh, knowing the kind of person she is and knowing the kind of, uh, business she would potentially run. So that's really all I want to say. I'm hoping that the board would, uh, consider this, uh, application favorably, and, uh, if you have any questions, uh, I will answer them. If not, uh, thank you for your time and indulgence.
Counselor Breeden on? Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Um, I am Liz Braden, I'm the District Counselor for District Nine. I am a resident of Oak Square, Brighton. Um, I want to go on record, uh, as being in non-opposition to this project, uh, and this proposal. Um, but I also want to, uh, raise, uh, um, concern, my concern is not really with the location, but maneuverability around the site, given that Lincoln Street will be made two-way in the future. And, and that this has been under consideration right now, and that the new development immediately across the street at seventy Leo will have a garage that exits immediately opposite to the lot at Castle Leaf. Um, and I really recommend that the proponent work with the BTD to ensure that vehicular and pedestrian safety are, uh, taken care of in this situation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We don't have any other electeds on. I have about a little over twenty raised hands, so just let me know how you want me to go about.
Can, can we hear from Tony Disidora, um, please, um, as a community, uh, representative?
Sure, yeah, Tony, go ahead. You've been unmuted.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony Disidora, representing the Alston Civic Association. Uh, Madam Chair, per our bylaws, um, we have to oppose this, uh, project. Uh, it was pretty obvious that the proponent did not, uh, assign a high priority to appearing before the Alston Civic Association, given that a number, uh, we have a number of members who live in the North Brighton area, and were denied an opportunity to express their concerns around this project. Uh, just to put some time reference on it, the presentation and approval by the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association took place on October first, two thousand nineteen. So yes, granted that we went dark for a little while because of the virus, uh, but we have been doing outreach through various channels, finally heard back and got a contact of Dwan's. We contacted Dwan. We thought she was coming to the October meetings, and at the last minute, she decided not to. Uh, and it's obvious that, uh, she's not going to be able to meet with us before this hearing today. So unfortunately, a, a lot of people were denied input, uh, into this project. Uh, the question, Madam Chair, I think you're going to chuckle out of this. We're certainly not going to go into a discussion about where the line is between Alston and Brighton. Uh, but I, I will say this, and the historical maps show it, uh, everything north of the Mass Pike, uh, is considered, uh, Alston. Uh, even though the Brighton Post Office decided way back when that a certain section of it was going to be administered out of their office, so that's how the O two one three five zip code got assigned. Uh, but let me just suffice to say this.
Thank you, thank you, Tony.
Suffice to say this.
Yeah, I, 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 um, Counselor, I hope that in the future, when you have projects that are, um, kind of, um, that, that, that all community groups be given, um, equal voice in this, especially when, um, there might be some overlap. Um, Ms. Ambassador, can I hear from Paula Alexander, and then may I hear from the call-in users?
Mm-hmm, yep, Paula, go ahead. You've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hi Paula?
Yes?
Oh, can you speak up? You're a little low.
Yes, I will speak louder, thank you. I'm Paula Alexander, two two six North Harvard Street in Alston, and I.
Paula, I'm sorry, we cannot hear you. Are you, can you speak a little louder or start, or adjust your volume? You want me to go back to her, Madam Chair, or?
Let's, let's hear from the Collins, please.
Okay, caller six, um, you've been unmuted, I think that's Minor, caller six.
Uh, th- thank you, Jessica. Madam Chair, good morning. Minor Perez with the Carpenter City, on behalf of our Boston residents, want to go and strong support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, caller fifteen, um, six, uh, five oh eight three six zero. You've been unmuted? Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead. Can you state your name and address?
Hi, yes, my name is Jerry, and I live on one sixteen Lake Street. Um, obviously, there's been a ton of new development along the Gas Street, and with this being right across from the Pike.
Thank you, thank you, because you are on Lake Street, I'd like to hear from people in, uh, proximity of the project. Is there anybody else who's called, and please, everybody who's spoken or who's had a turn at the mic, please lower your hands. Um, can I hear from somebody, another call-in user? I just want to make sure that if people don't have the technology, they, they still have access to this, to comments.
Yep, caller twenty-one.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, yep, can you state your name and address?
Hi, I'm sorry, my na- my name is Bernadette Lally. I live in eleven Alcott Street in Lower Alston. I'm right down the other end of the street, um, from where this is being proposed. Um, I think this is a, the perfect location for this. There's parking, there, you know, I, I wrote a letter as well. Um, I, I, my biggest, um, plus for this is that I know Dwan, and she's been a part of our community for a long time. I'm, I'm a lifelong member of Alston-Brighton. Um, it is closer to, it, I'm in Alston, but it is, it, the location is in Brighton.
Thank you so much, thank you. Um, let's see, can, um, can I just, I'm randomly picking people, if anybody, I'd like everybody to, those people who live close to the project, can you leave your hands raised? Everybody else, please lower your hands, okay? I know this is a mixed bag, we've gotten a lot of comments, but I'd like to hear from people who live within a few blocks of this project.
Madam Chair, Tracy Wu lives, uh, she just sent me a message saying she lives a block away.
Okay, let's hear from Tracy.
Yep, Tracy, you've been unmuted?
Hello? Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Tracy.
Yeah, hi, uh, thank you for allowing me to talk. Uh, basically, I have a few points. Um, besides of this location, uh, we have one in North Beacon, and another one on the other side, uh, other end of the Lincoln Street. So we have three altogether within the vicinity area, so that's one. Another thing is, we have a park within hundred feet away from the, the Candy Leaf Shop, and I have a lot of concerns, we have a lot of children, people with a disability, you know, uh, that's.
Ms. Wu, are you, uh, in support or in opposition of this project?
Opposition, sorry, I'm not too familiar with the process, sorry. I mean, opposition, uh, yeah, I, I oppose the, uh, the site.
Okay, thank you.
There are people who are inboxing me directly, can you, uh, see Chris? Hi Chris, you've been unmuted? Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, certainly, Chris Parisi. I live on one, on, uh, Nineteen Shepherd Street, and I lived on Waverly, uh, Waverly F for about fifteen years. I'd like to strongly support this project. The location is great, um, but our concept is great, and I'll give Dwan kudos. She's been involved in the, uh, in the, uh, community, and I do absolutely trust her judgment, so absolutely support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody who's spoken, please lower your hand.
Okay, and Steve, you've been unmuted? Hi Steve? Laverty? He sent me a message, he inboxed, uh,
Okay.
See Michael.
Okay, we're going to hear from two more people in proximity, and then we're going to close comment.
Okay, uh, Michael, go ahead, you've been unmuted?
Uh, is that me, Michael Tizik?
Yes.
Yes, uh, I live at, my name is Michael Tizik. I live at fourteen Portsmouth Street, uh, across the street from the playground. Um, quickly, um, they cannot count, you cannot count the parking in the back, it's basically tandem on the sidewalk. Um, I would like to go over, uh, the, uh, the city meeting about the traffic on the area. They held a traffic about the BTD, the whatever they're called, sorry, uh, uh, um, plan.
Are you in support or in opposition?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm in opposition.
Okay, and, and thank you. Um, one more person, please.
Jeff, okay, one second, uh, go ahead, Jeff. Shio, you've been unmuted?
Hi, uh, uh, I live on Portsmouth Street across from the, uh, the playground as well, and I'm in opposition due to the, uh, issues we've mentioned regarding all the new developments causing additional traffic, and we're just going to see even more cut-through traffic, um, for our street with the playground there. And there's, there's still no speed bump, and I, I see cars speeding through and, and kids trying to cross the street all the time, and I, I can see that, uh, increasing with, uh, with all this new development, including this one we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, um, Jay Yeomans with the applicant. May I address the traffic concerns?
Uh, yes, please, briefly.
Yes, I just want to note that, uh, currently Galaxy Integrated Technologies has sixty employees, and given the nature of their business, uh, they are the primary, uh, consultant for security and vendor for Foxborough, Landmark, NGH, many other prominent institutions in Massachusetts. As a result, there is approximately fifteen to twenty-three deliveries using tractor-trailer trucks that go through that neighborhood per day. That means there's a hundred and fifteen tractor-trailer deliveries that go through the neighborhood, uh, along this route, uh, per week. Um, with the use that we are, um, uh, seeking today, that will be reduced to ten deliveries utilizing an unmarked van. Um, this will be a significant reduction to the six hundred and ninety trips that this use generates per day.
Thank you. Okay, um, so we will close comments right now, um, may, given all this information, um, may I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, um, what BPDA design review is screening and buffering.
Um, and then, uh,
This applicant only.
Yes, and then, um, I would also suggest for B, BTD review. Because there was talk about the street becoming two-way at Lincoln, um, just so that there's no possibility of conflict.
Sure, sure.
Okay, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eric's opposed.
Who's, who's opposed?
Eric.
Eric, you're opposed, that's one opposition. May I suggest to the applicant that they hustle and get onto the ACA agenda so that that community group is, um, is informed of what's happening in detail on this proposed project?
Yes, Madam Chair, I spoke to, um, Tony over the weekend, uh, Sunday night, actually, so we're, we're on course for that.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call the eleven o'clock hearings. Uh, I actually called eleven o'clock hearings to defer withdrawals. I will call it again for anybody who was not on. So if you have an eleven o'clock case and you're going to defer or withdraw, if you can give me the address for us. Hearing none, I'll go to the first case, calling BOA one two zero two six seven six three R D Street. This stat scares any roof deck. The violation is Article fifty-three, Section fifty-two, roof structural restriction. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the building has excess feet, and Article fifty-three, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, afternoon, Madam Chair and Board members. Uh, my name is Gera Riddle, property owner of, uh, three R D Street, Unit Three.
So tell us what's being proposed?
Uh, so my fiancee and I want to expand our living area, um, and we're looking to request relief for the addition of a roof deck, uh, which is triggering the excessive height and roof struct, uh, roof structural restrictions. Uh, the deck is exclusive use to our home, uh, accessed by adding a new private interior staircase to the deck. Um, due to the interior ceiling height of, uh, eight feet within our home, a headhouse is necessary to gain access, uh, which will be consistent with surrounding building aesthetics, uh, as there are three headhouses.
Ask you, let me ask you, is this new, this, this looks from the view that it was fairly new construction?
Yes, that's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, Tom, uh, let me ask you, um, was there any proviso or anything about roof decks on this proposal? Um, because it's, um, it's disconcerting to me to see, um, these roof decks coming in with headhouses after we've approv, approved proposals. Um, and just for you, um, uh, Mr. Clark, uh, Mr. Riddle, uh, just so that you know, we're not great fans of headhouses, uh, but more, um, more into, um, uh, other means of eager, uh, uh, accessing that, the deck. So we'll just put it out there immediately, okay? Um, so, um, go ahead with your presentation, please.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. I, I'm fully aware that, uh, they're not, uh, they're not perceived as very, very good structures on homes. Uh, we tried to build it on the outside patio, uh, but the patio is not wide enough as constructed. Um, and the interior ceiling height of eight feet did not allow for a hatch, so our only, uh, our only option was building a headhouse. Um, but as I was mentioning, there, there are three headhouses, uh, in the nearby properties, including the immediate butter, which is a brand-new construction project, um, that has a, a very large headhouse, uh, that was approved and being built. Um, we've worked with our neighbors.
Yeah, can you put the address of that place on the record? Because we are just, um, um, I mean, this is, this is an issue of things are happening, um, when there's clear indication that headhouses are not, uh, a route that this board is interested in.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. It's three four seven Maverick Street is the building next door that's, uh, new construction.
Okay, so, um, in the meantime, uh, how are the plans, uh, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the plans are fine, um, you, you know, I think the issue is the issue. It, it, they do show a headhouse. Um, it is constrained in the corner, but, uh, it's hard for me to tell if a repatch is, is viable or not.
Okay. How, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I, I mean, that's my question. I don't quite understand what it means that a hatch can't be used. We are, we have seen plenty of other similarly, uh, designed buildings where hatches work, so, uh, uh, I'm a little puzzled by that argument.
Okay.
Is, is the, is Eric, is Eric on, in contact?
I am, uh, uh, to, uh, Mr. Riddle's question, we, we had looked at a number of scenarios to try and have a long enough, straight enough stretch to put in a hatch. And as you can see on the drawing on the left, there, there really isn't anywhere where we wouldn't be, um, taking out about a third of either the living room, the dining room, or one of the bedrooms. So we decided we had needed to use this rear stair, and in order to do that, we need to get up, um, i- in the switchback, we need to get up high enough to, to kind of address, to, to get to this, the straight run portion of it. And so we would have to build a, uh, build a case, a headhouse at a certain point, and then put a hatch in front of that. Um, and we talked about that with, with Mr. Riddle, that the hatch would actually be above the thirty inches that we normally would see a, a headhouse at. So, so it became so convoluted that we decided we, um, we would try and do a minimal headhouse at the rear corner.
And what does minimal mean? What's the dimension of it?
So it, it's three feet wide, um, on the, the, uh, stretch, and then we sloped the roof. So it, it's three feet wide, um, on the, the, uh, stretch, and then we sloped the roof to, to kind of, um, make it as minimal in profile as we can and just have a three-foot landing at the top of the, uh, of the.
And does pull-down stairs work, uh, for access to, um, a deck like that?
No, the building code wouldn't allow us to do pull-down stairs to.
But what about a circular staircase?
We could do a circular staircase, but it would, um, be somewhat similar in that it would take up, it, it didn't fit on the rear deck and then, so we would put it inside of a room and it ends up being about a five-foot square or twenty-five square feet taken out of one of these rooms, and most of the rooms are a hundred and fifty square feet, so.
It's hard to have your cake and eat it too, huh?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, let go on record in support of this proposal. Uh, the community process was conducted by Lena Tramelli, who reports that this, uh, proposal received strong support from the Jeffries Point, uh, Neighborhood Association, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Michael Benetti from the Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards, the council would like to go on record in support of this proposal, thank you.
Madam Chair, we have a couple of letters of support.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, so, um, may I have a motion, please?
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, support, it is in the rear, um, I think if, uh with BPDA design review to see if there's any, uh, opportunity to make a hatch work that we can't figure out in this ten minutes.
So we're, we are approving, we're proposing to approve with design review to have the duck, but to look at alternate means of egress to it from a headhouse.
To eliminate the headhouse.
Eliminate.
That's what I was going to ask. Now, that, that was what I was going to ask, is if I'm looking at a different thing.
Is there a second?
Wait, can I, before, I, I'm ha- I'm happy to say, I just wanna be clear on the motion, if we're asking the BPAD to try to look at something I'm, then I'm not okay with it, if we're saying we eliminate the headhouse, I am, is it, was that?
Perfect, it's to eliminate the headhouse.
Alright, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, uh, you're all set with that proviso, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling B O A one-two-four-eight-one-seven-zero-eleven-fifty-four-to-eleven-sixty-Washington Street. This to combine the existing roof storage structure with the unit, with Unit Eight by use of internal staircase. Violation is Article sixty-five, section sixty-four dash thirty-four. Restricted roof dr- structure district is conditional. Article sixty-four, section nineteen, the maximum of height allowed is conditional, and Article sixty-four, section nineteen, extension of a non-conforming F A R, name and address for the record, please.
Is the applicant on or not? Let's move to the next project, please.
Calling the next case, calling B O A one-two-five-two-nine-five-three-five-ninety-five-to-six-zero-three-Newberry Street. This is seeking to change an occupancy from a commercial building to a residential building, which will include seventy-one also to renovate the existing structure and construct a four-story addition. The violation is Article thirteen, section one, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article thirteen, section one, the usable open space is insufficient. Article thirteen, section one, the front yacht is insufficient. Article thirteen, section one, the rear yacht is insufficient. Article twenty-three, section one, off-street parking is insufficient. Article twenty-four, section one, off-street loading is insufficient. And Article thirty-two, section four, this is G card applicability, name and address.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself in this matter.
Uh, this is Costa?
That's correct, that's me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of eleven Beacon Street, representing the applicant, Tebow Development, and I also have Tanya Carrier from Colsa Design, who are the architects on the proposal.
Can you hold on for a minute, Christian, are you on?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Rowan Trust, and we have both the Boston Warren's or approval and no harm letters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, counselor.
Thank you.
We also have a letter, secretary here.
Thank you.
We are seeking to erect a four-story addition, uh, atop of an existing three-story commercial structure uh, and change the occupancy to seventy-one units, um, this project, um, will comply with the compact living guideline policy set by the BPDA and this project was approved by the BPDA Board back in July. This particular building, um, on Newberry Street is across from the Mass Pike. It is, has been idle for a number of years, um, and so we wanna bring some life back to this building with a residential use. We also, in our process of working, uh, with the community and the BPDA, provided over the amount of amenity space and put that amenity space both on the exterior of the building and on the interior of the building. We have two thousand fifty.
Hold on, counselor, so this will change, what is it, from, it's, is it a two-story building now to a six?
Yeah, it's an elevated four-story building, Madam Chair, uh, three-story, but it's about fifty, fifty feet or so. So this would now become a seven-story building.
Okay, and you're gonna still hold on to those very high ceilings in the existing space? Or will there be in the tunnel, okay?
No, we would, and we're keeping the structure, which was very important, to make sure we kept that building.
And, uh, give us a breakdown on the bedroom count and the square footage.
Sure, so these are all, uh, studios and one-bedroom units, um, I'll give you a breakdown of the floor plan, so on the exterior is our resident open space, uh, that will have picnic tables, benches, and landscaping area with fifteen outdoor bike spaces. The basement level, uh, existing on this building would house our gym, tenant's storage, bike storage, that would be a seventy-one bike parking inside and also a repair station and all utility rooms. The first floor would house eight units, and those units would vary in size from three-hundred-and-twenty-seven square feet to four-hundred-and-ninety-eight square feet. That would also have a lobby mailroom area, an office, some business office, uh, for amenity space, a package room, and our trash room facility. We'd then go up to the second floor, which would house ten units, those units would vary in size from three-hundred-and-eighteen square feet to four-hundred-and-ninety-six square feet, that would also have an amenity dining room area. We would then go up to the third floor, and that would house eleven units, and those units range from three-hundred-and-eighteen square feet on the studio to five-hundred-and-three square feet for the one bed. We would go up to the fourth floor, and that would have a.
Bedroom was how much, five-hundred and what?
Five-hundred-and-three, but those go up to five-hundred-and-twenty-four, so it varies, so there, the, the variables, uh, for studios, the average is three-fifty and for the one beds, it's four-seventy to five-twenty-four.
And so I've heard so far the smallest studio size is three-eighteen.
Correct, and that is the smallest size, Madam Chair.
Um, and on the addition, are you proposing any balcony space or any roof deck or anything like that?
No, no roof deck and no balconies, um, there is the exterior green space in that picture right there that you can see that would also have the bike, uh, bike area outside, and then everything else would be interior amenity space.
And is this an elevator building?
Yes.
And, um, who do you anticipate, uh, living here? Will it be open to, um, students, rentals by students?
No, this would be geared towards young professionals, Madam Chair, so, um, and, and we made the units, um, obviously, uh, very efficient. They have plenty of storage area, um, uh, use of pull-down like tables for dining, stuff like that, just to make them efficient. And then as we went through the community process, we found there was a need for this, there's a lot of commercial, there's a number of hotels in the area but there wasn't as much residential on this block, um, and so, uh, that's who we'd be gearing this to.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the plans are good, um, looks pretty straightforward in terms of, uh, the scope, so the rear alleyway, you, you do have access, that's you'll be using that for your trash and any kind of move-in and delivery.
Correct, yes, yes, Mr. Robinson, that's correct.
Okay, uh, no, no questions.
And just one more question, uh, how many of these units are gonna be affordable?
So it's nine with a payout, Madam Chair.
Nine plus payout, okay.
Yep.
Any questions from the board?
Um, I'm sorry, I may have missed this, but the, these, uh, these small units, what, the common space adds up to how much square footage?
So, Mr. Ehrlich, it is two-thousand-fifty interior and then two-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-four exterior. Uh, two-thousand was required under the compact guidelines, but so we're double that, a little over.
And this, this kind of backs up to the hotel, right?
Correct, there's spacing in between, but there is the hotel directly behind us, that's correct.
Yes, okay. Okay, um, any other questions from the board? Um, does it have a roof deck? Does that look like a roof deck or what is that?
No roof deck, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I think that the elevator overrides and the access to the.
Correct.
Okay, any, uh, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Kennedy Avery from Counselor Bach's office. Counselor Bach is strongly in support of this application, uh, she appreciates the work of the developer with the community to eliminate executive suites from the proposal and to improve the streetscape around the project to make the whole area safer for pedestrians, uh, the dominant mode of travel around this site. Uh, with so much lab going into Kenmore Square, it's important to have this residential development for evening vibrancy and the compact living units are very appropriate at this extremely transit-accessible site next to the Green Line, a major bus station, and the commuter rail. Um, the council wants to express our full support for this project, thank you.
I, yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Molly Griffin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Just to echo Kennedy said, that given the community process facilitated and the approval, um, by the BPDA Board, our office would also like to go on record in support of this project, thank you.
It's the secretary of the letters. Well, hearing none, I'll go to the caller. Uh, Dolores, you've been unmuted, are you looking to give testimony on this proposal?
Yes, um, thank you, my name is Dolores Bookdaniel, I live at four-fifty-two Park Drive, which is not too far from this location, near Kenmore Square and I'm support housing in this city, we desperately need it. Um, not so sure about these little tiny places for people, I don't know if it encourages long-term residency, which I think is much, very important for this city, I also think building anything for seventy people um, and no parking, which I think is the case here, is, excuse the vernacular, simply crazy. Just have to say it, thank you.
Okay, caller six, you've been unmuted?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Minor Perez with the Carpenter Union, we wanna go on record in support of this project.
Thank you, and Paula, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record? Oh, Pamela, I'm sorry.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, my name is Pam Beal and I'm the president of the Kenmore Association and I'm here to speak in favor of this project and the mitigation that has been worked out with the community and Counselor Bach, thank you.
Thank you. I think I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPAD design review.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling B O A one-two-four-one-zero-five-seven-ninety-nine-Williams Street. This to combine two lots into a newly created single lot to be seven-thousand-two-hundred square feet and erect a new multifamily dwelling of six units, the violation is Article fifty-five, section forty, off-street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-five, section eight, a multifamily dwelling use is forbidden. Article fifty-five, section nine, the additional lot area is insufficient, and Article fifty-five, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive and Article fifty-five, section nine, the rear yacht is insufficient, name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Madam Chair, this is Joe Federico, I am the applicant, um, with a business address of one-ninety-nine Norfolk Avenue in Roxbury. Um, the proposal is located at ninety-nine Williams Street, um, there are two existing vacant lots that total to seventy-two-hundred square feet, and we are proposing a new six-family building on the lots with five three-bedroom units and one single three, single resident, excuse me, single-bedroom unit. We previously presented this pres- um, proposal to the board back in April and, uh, since then, we have made, uh, several changes to the proposal. I think the most significant is that we have relocated the parking and access to the parking um, by moving the curb cut off of Stedman Street, which is the side street over there, and onto Williams Street. Um, by doing so, we are able to save nearly all of the existing trees on the site um, while only reducing the parking from five spaces to four spaces, uh, we also removed.
Um, so can you give us, so this is, um okay, uh, give us the breakdown of, um, the unit sizes?
Sure, so the five three-bedroom units are all roughly eleven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, I believe they range from like eleven-forty to eleven-sixty and then the one, uh, single-bedroom unit is it is five-hundred-and-thirty-two square feet. So that would be the unit on the first floor right there, um, next to the parking garage.
And any basement occupancy?
There is not.
There is not.
They use just for, uh, utilities, mechanical rooms, and bicycle storage, and also t- tenant storage as well.
And, I'm sorry, this is in J P, right?
This is in Jamaica Plain, correct, it's, it's right off of Washington Street, just past, um, where Doyle's previously was.
Yep, okay, um how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, I think the plan, the, the plans are good, um, I think the, the height and the, the design is consistent with the, the surrounding buildings, no, no real questions about it.
So this, uh, so, I'm sorry, I'm just a little confused, is this the, this is not the old Doyle's building, is it the parking lot building? Is this?
It's just past the parking lot building, um, if you went past Doyle's, with Doyle's on your left-hand side of the road, you go past that, past the parking lot building and then this is located right on the right-hand side of the road, just past Stedman Street.
Okay, okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, let go on record in support of this proposal. Uh, the applicant and their team went before the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association back in August where they voted not to oppose the variances being requested. At this time, uh, there are no letters of opposition that have been presented to the Mayor's Office, let go on record in support, thank you.
Madam Chair, we have a couple of, uh, support letters.
Thank you.
I do have one raised hand, Elaine, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record?
Um, Jessica, I'm, I'm, um, I'm the architect and I, I just wanted to just make sure that I was unmuted in case anybody had a question for me.
Okay, thank you.
I will say we have no roof decks.
Okay, thank you, and was, has ninety-nine Williams been before this board, has this address been before this board before?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, we appeared before the board on April twenty-seventh and the main opposition at that time, um, well, this lot is one in from the corner. Ninety-nine Williams is one in, ninety-seven is on the corner, and we were coming in to the, to access the parking off of Stedman Street. So, we eliminated ninety-seven Williams completely from the project and we're putting a new curb cut off of Williams Street to access parking in the rear. There's a garage serving three cars and, um, one surface space.
Okay. And has the number of units changed?
No, six units.
Okay, um, uh, so, um, Ambassador, no other comments, no? Okay, um, so Ambassador, no other comments, no hands raised or anything? Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve with the BPA Design Review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set with that, good luck.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, Jessica. Madam Chair, before, um, we call, I call the next case, I'm going to call the twelve-thirties for any deferrals or withdrawals. If there are any deferrals or withdrawals for twelve-thirty, if you can give me the address, please? Not one deferral today.
I missed a fortune.
Go ahead, Mr. Pulgeni.
And so, the address is sixty Stanley Street?
You're deferring?
Yeah, so this came before you guys back on August.
Yeah, let me just call it into the record, please. On case BOA one one six 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 two seven six, sixty Stanley Street, name and address for the record, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Pulgeni, Ten Forbes Road in Braintree, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this proposal came before you guys on August twenty-fourth, at the time, there were some concerns about the uh, location of the property to the sidewalk, and we have redesigned, we redesigned the plans, we had.
So Mr. Pulgeni, you're, you're asking for deferral?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, Madam Chair, that's exactly what I'm asking for, sorry about that.
Thank you, may I have a motion for deferral?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A date, please?
Yeah, Madam Chair, we do have dates for, for January, so we're going to go January eleventh at twelve-thirty.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
See you in the new year.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Hearing none, I'll call the next case, calling BOA one two four six nine four nine, nine, nine oh three Beacon Street. This is a change, change building from one unit to three units, an addition of one hundred and twenty-eight square feet in the rear balcony, an addition of three hundred and thirty, thirty square feet of roof deck and thirty-inch tall roof hatch. Changed the existing garage structure to a carport. The violation is Article sixty-one, section eight, side yard is insufficient. Article sixty-one, section eight, the rear yard is insufficient, and Article sixty-one, section eight, the additional lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott Quilty and Miller, twenty-eight State Street in Boston. Here on behalf of nine oh three Beacon LLC, who's the applicant. Uh, with me today from, from that LLC is Andy Di Matteo and Ed De Noble. Um, nine oh three Beacon, Madam Chair, is located in the Audubon Circle, Fenway neighborhood of the city. This is an existing four-level, uh, brick building of about five thousand square feet, and Andy and Ed recently purchased the property. Um, when they got into the property, they identified some much-needed upgrades to the building, uh, both inside and out, and they also realized that they needed to rectify the property's inconsistencies uh, between its actual existing conditions, the city's assessing records, and the property records at ISB. So although it's on the record as a single family, it's actually uh, been used as either a three-family or even a four-unit building, uh, in the past. So, the, one of the main things we're looking to do is, we've applied to legalize the use and occupancy of the building uh, as an allowed three-family use, this is an MFR sub-district, so it's an allowed use. Um, it has been assessed by the city actually as a three-family for a few years now, uh, but for whatever reason, ISB records have it as a single family, so part of the.
I'm sorry, um, Cizula, has this, has nine oh three Beacon been before this board before?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, Madam Chair, no, not under, not under our representation or under this ownership, no.
Yes, because, uh, regardless, we kind of are interested whether the, uh, uh, property has been before us. So tell us how, how this, these three units are being created, or?
Sure, yep, yes, yes ma'am, so again, applying to legalize that use and occupancy, it, it is existing space. Um, there are, uh, for, what we see from how, how it's been previously, uh, it is set up actually as, um, units on each floor, um, with four, four kitchens, four beds, um, I'm sorry, four kitchens, four baths, four units, et cetera. Um, so what's being proposed is to kind of reconfigure, um, the space um, and, um, make it into, you know, again, a three-unit building. Um, unit one would be a three-bed, two-and-a-half-bath at twenty-one hundred square feet. Unit two would be a two-bed, two-bath at, uh, eleven forty-three square feet, and unit three would be a three-bed, two-bath at twelve seventy-eight square feet. So all large, two- and three-bed units, well over, um, you know, the minimum's well over a thousand square feet each. And the rest of the proposal, other than that, is to add some, you know, basically to, to add some outdoor space to the building, so each of these units has, um, has usable open space at the property.
And tell us, and tell us what a carport is?
So a carport, it's a good question, so, um, what's there now? Um, you can see, um, I think it's on slide four of the presentation, it's this unsightly kind of concrete bunker, um, garage. Um, and it's, you know, we actually, I've never seen this before, many years of doing this, there's a chain-linked fence around the top of the garage where there's a roof deck on top of the garage, and it's just very unsightly and I don't even know how it got to this point, I, in the past, but, so what they're looking to do is really kind of tear that down and modernize it, and a carport is, um, my understanding is just, uh, uh, basically, um, you know, it, it allows for a roof over the parking, um, but it's open air everywhere else, so it's basically kind of four posts with a roof on top of it, um, to provide, you know, um, shade and, um, you know, comfort from the elements for the vehicles, protection from the elements, but other than that, the, the rest of it's open to light and air, um, and it just looks a lot better than, than what it will look like now. So it's a garage, it's kind of like a garage, but without the walls.
Yeah, because I don't think we've ever approved a carport in, um, my memory, but.
You have, yep. You have, Madam Chair, actually, we did one, it was, uh, it was behind Back Bay, it was a similar situation, but that, you've, that, you may have been a secretary at the time and not chair.
Oh, yeah, so this was where, uh, where in the Back Bay?
Uh, uh, I can't remember off the top of my head, um, if, if I had a few minutes, I could, I could, I could email, I could email you.
But wasn't one of the alleys off of, in Back Bay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, um, so, yeah, so, let's just see, um, how are the plans, um, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good, I guess the only one question I have is the, the common area mechanical seems to be accessible only through unit one?
Um, which, you're looking at the, the base, the, the lower level floor plans of the first level?
Yeah, if you look at A four.
Yeah, so, um, I don't think our architect is on, she had a conflict, um, because, you know, this is the timing of, of the, of the hearing, but, but yeah, so the mechanicals, if you look at slide five, or, all right, this slide, perfect, yeah. The mechanicals and the furnace are, are there. Uh, the common mechanicals, I believe, are now, if you look on the left side, that's, uh, that, that is what's existing on this picture, and if you look on the right side, Mr. Robinson, that's what's proposed, and we're rejiggering the, the, the mechanicals so they are accessible via common stair. So if you see, there, there is a stairwell, I believe, that goes down, if you see within the unit, that goes down into the common mechanical. It is, it is also accessible through the, the, the first unit, yes.
Okay, and then, just for clarification to the board, I mean, obviously, there's cars parked outside bedroom one on the lower level, but that is a full-height wall, right, those bedrooms are open, not below ground, right, in the back.
Yes, Mr. Robinson. Yes, Mr. Robinson.
I enjoyed the conversation about a carport, can't believe no one knows what a carport is.
I did my best with the unarchitectural, uh, description of a garage without walls, but yes, it's eight-foot tall ceiling height in there, and the sills are three foot, two inches off the floor, so it's a full, full, full walkout, yep.
Okay, uh, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Molly Griffin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Uh, we hosted an abutters meeting on September twenty-first where the applicant addressed concerns, and they've also received support from, um, the Audubon Circle Neighborhood Association, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Kennedy Avery from Councilor Bach's office. Councilor Bach would also like to go on record of support, given the neighborhood's, uh, support for this applicant by way of the Audubon Circle Neighborhood or, Association, and given the agreement between ACNA and the applicant, um, to address rental restrictions, rodent control, and water runoff management of the property, thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we do have one letter of support.
Thank you. I do have one raised hand, Dolores, are you looking to give testimony on this proposal?
Yes, thank you, again, my name is Dolores Bookdaniel, I'm the President of the Audubon Circle Neighborhood Association, and I was pleased to have an opportunity to meet with the owners via, virtually, as well as Nick on their behalf, and I, we are in support, the board is in support of this project, making, we hate to see the, one, the single families go in Boston, but this building has already been devised, subdivided, so this is making it conform with its existing use, um, nice-sized units, two parking spaces for a three-unit building, which is a heck of a lot better than none for a seventy-one-unit building, um, and just, I'm, we're counting on them to do a nice job, to do things tastefully, and, um, really hopeful that the people we'll have in these units will become members of our community and active neighbors. Um, to the extent, I just want to say this, it was very important to us that the owners agreed that they would put in their condo documents that these units could not be leased for less than six months. So many of the units that have come onto the market have been dedicated to executive suite, short-term use, and we're really glad that this proviso will eliminate, lessen the likelihood of that happening here. So, again, in support, thank you.
Thanks, okay, Fabian, you've been unmuted, are you looking to give testimony for this proposal?
Yes, thank you so much, hi, my name is Fabian Montesir, and I am in support of this proposal. I am a neighbor, um, and homeowner across the street at sixty, um, and I am, I, myself.
Thank you. I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, um, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve with BPA Design Review.
I'll, I'll second that.
To the exterior.
Do we do? Is this subject to landmarks?
Oh, good point.
It's, yeah, any exterior, I think, goes to landmarks.
So we'll approve it.
Okay, so it's a motion for approval, is there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, thank you, good luck.
Madam, Madam Chair, if I may, Madam Chair, just to close the loop, it is thirty, the, the carport that we did was thirty Yarmouth Street. It was before the board in two thousand sixteen. I was doing that while we were looking, I was looking in our files while we were doing the discussion. It's thirty Yarmouth Street, it was two thousand sixteen, I'm happy to provide that info if, if anybody would like it, thank you.
Going to a case that called earlier, calling BOA one two four eight one seven zero eleven fifty-four to eleven sixty, Washington Street, are you on?
Good afternoon, Michael Barone from RIW two fifty-five State Street for the applicant, Robert Wells, and in part for Boston City Lights.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, sir, I gotta call it for the record. This is a combining existing roof storage structure with unit eight by the use of internal staircase, the violation is Article sixty-five, section sixty-four dash thirty-four, roofs restricted, roof structure district, Article sixty-four, section nineteen, the maximum allowed height has been exceeded. Article sixty-four, section nineteen, the extension of a non-conforming FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Michael Barone Junior of Roberto Israel and Weiner, two fifty-five State Street, Boston. Uh, with me today, I have Mr. Robert Wells, the owner of unit nine, and the prospective purchaser of the penthouse unit in question, as well as, I believe, we have, uh, Tyann Donahue of Boston City Lights Foundation, the owner of the penthouse at this time, as well as our architect, Catherine Truman, and Stephen Wonka of Catherine Truman Architects, Ryan Garrity, and Amanda Gross of Seadark.
Thank you for having a full, a full star team on, but it's getting late for us, we have still other items, so can you please directly address what the need is and what, and describe what, what you are seeking from us?
Absolutely, Madam Chair, thank you. Uh, so, Mr. Wells is currently the owner of unit nine, the rear unit on the sixth floor of the Colombian Building condominium located eleven fifty-four through eleven sixty, Washington Street. He is seeking to purchase the penthouse unit, which was previously approved via permit from nineteen eighty-eight and a Board of Appeals decision from nineteen eighty-seven, and he seeks to incorporate that penthouse unit that is directly above unit nine into unit nine by way of an interior staircase.
Okay, and so, um, what would be this full size of that unit, then?
So the penthouse is existing in its current size, which is approximately twenty-seven, uh, feet and four inches by twenty-seven feet and six inches, and it would be a matter of, uh, just putting an interior staircase between unit nine and, uh, that penthouse unit, which is shown on, uh, our presentation. I believe that is on page.
Okay.
The plans begin on page eleven of our presentation.
And is there an ultimate plan to build a deck up there, what is, what is it for, it's just to have the extra space up there?
Correct, so the current intent is to just connect it to unit nine to provide additional space. It's currently used for storage use by Boston City Lights Foundation, which is why, unfortunately, we are running into the building height and FAR variances. Those two, uh, become an issue because going from the storage use to the residential use uh, now brings the height and the square footage back into the purview of the definition of building height, as well as floor area ratio. When the penthouse was originally constructed in nineteen eighty-eight, it was constructed pursuant to a permit and a uh, Board of Appeal decision that permitted it to be used as an extension of unit six for residential purposes.
And how many square feet is that space, that storage space?
Uh, I will defer to our architect, uh, Stephen Wonka from Catherine Truman Architects, Stephen, are you available?
Uh, this is Robert Wells, if I may, it, it, it's, uh, uh, about seven hundred fifty square feet.
Okay, thank you, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the plans are good, I just have one question, is this a high-rise structure as it currently exists? Is the additional height, it's not adding additional story that would be then triggering a high-rise condition, is it?
So we, we would take the position that it's a, a non-conforming existing structure, uh, under Article nine, on the basis that this structure has been in place since nineteen eighty-eight, and the height has existed there since nineteen eighty-eight, so we believe that it would just continue as a non-conforming, as a non-conforming.
This is a building code question, I guess, sorry, not a zoning code.
Correct. My apologies.
I should have stated that, this is just a question of, if we're already additionally above seventy feet, is my question. There's no heights in the building, I just wanted to. Okay, that's fine, we can move on, we, we can move on, we'll do.
In another way, should we need to, any other questions, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, let's go record in support of this proposal. Uh, there was no opposition from abutters during the community process, as expressed to our office, and the applicant received a letter of support from the East Berkeley Neighborhood Association, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam of the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Fling's office. The council would like to go on record in support based on feedback from neighbors and the East Berkeley Neighborhood Association, thank you.
Madam Chair, it's Jeff.
Yes, please, go ahead, Jeff.
Uh, Councilor, does this have any urban renewal implications? Do you have to amend the LDA at all because it isn't an urban renewal overlay?
Uh, so, our understanding from speaking with, uh, with the city is that we do not on the basis that the structure is already present.
All right, just wanted to make sure that you were aware that it's an urban renewal.
Thank you.
And you have a raised hand? Yep, okay, raised hand, um, from caller twenty, um, six one seven six nine nine, you've been unmuted? You here to give testimony for this proposal?
Uh, no, I'm Stephen Wonka, uh, with Catherine Truman Architects, I'm the architect, I was just raising my hand to, uh, to speak on behalf of the question.
I was just raising my hand to, to speak on behalf of the questions.
Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Secretary, we do have letters of support.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with no building code relief in the event it's above high-rise.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposition? Motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to call the first case for 1230. Call in case BOA 121-3818, 1209 Bennington Street. This erect a three-story multifamily dwelling, six residential units with roof deck and parking for five vehicles. Violations, Article 27 T-5, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the side yards insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, just for the record, I need to recuse myself on this.
Okay, for the record, Mr. Rosiero is recusing.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Linz, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of Crespo Development. Also with me is Tricia Lorrea from Joy Street Design, who's the architect for this project. Madam Chair and members of the board, this is a pre-existing two-family dwelling with an accessory building located in the rear of the property. This is located in Orient Heights, section of East Boston, located 2F 5,000 district, but located directly across from the economic development area, which is seeing a number of proposed development projects coming through the process. Our proposal would be to raise the existing structure, the accessory structure in the rear, and to construct a new six-unit residential dwelling with a total of five off-street parking spaces. And I'm sure we defer the matter in order to go back and revise our.
Counselor, what's, what's the square foot of the lot?
The lot is 5,000 square feet, so it's 50 by 100. And our proposal would, as you can see here from the render, is probably the place to start. As I said, we, we had deferred the matter in order to go back and look at some revisions to this project. We've brought the building down to a three-story building. It's actually below the height limit, which is allowable up to 35 feet. That was a direct response to comments that we did here. We've also worked on orienting the building to address some of our concerns to our right. So we do have a little bit over a 10-foot setback, which allows the driveway to be placed on the right side of the building. We do have a four-foot setback on the left side of the building as well. All the units, sorry, most of the units are four, those six units are two-bedroom. One unit is a one-bedroom and one unit is a three-bedroom. The size of the three-bedroom is about 1,100 square feet. The two-bedrooms range in size from anywhere from about 810 square feet up to about 920 square feet. And the one-bedroom is actually generously sized at about 840 square feet, Madam Chair. By way of relief, again, this being in a 2F 5,000 neighborhood, this is, as I said, it's sort of in a transitional area located directly across from the Suffolk Downs train station and sort of at the outskirts of the East Boston Orient Heights neighborhood. There is an industrial zone directly across the street. There are multiple proposals for multifamily residential occurring presently. There is a multifamily residential that is also approved up the street at five stories, 44 units. And there's an ongoing community process for the former casket company. I would believe a number of units are being proposed as well.
So let me just ask you about the parking. Tell us how the parking is proposed to work.
Sure, I think we can, if we jump back one slide, Madam Ambassador, if we could just go back, I think it has a better view. Here we go. So two of the spaces, Madam Chair, would be located under the back portion of the building and the remaining three spaces along the back portion of the property towards the left side, if you're looking at it from the front. We do, and we have added screening and buffering on both the left side of the building as well as the rear. And we have, in response to some of the comments that we did hear from the rear of butter, one about lowering the height and two about screening and buffering, we've incorporated that into our, into our plans. We can, as you can see here.
And is this an elevator building?
No, our accessible unit, or we are able to have an accessible unit, actually two accessible units at lower level. Units, both units one and two.
Okay, and lower level does not mean basement, right?
There's no basement proposed. This would be a slab-on-grade construction. And again, in order to address some of the concerns over height and to bring this building down to 31 feet, we are, we are proposing a slab-on-grade.
And tell us about the roof deck?
Roof decks are exclusive to the upper-level units. They are accessed by hatch, of course.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good. No questions on the, on the layouts or, and there is no units below. What is the, sorry, what is the side yard dimension again on the left-hand side, as you're saying?
Mr. Robinson, I have it at four feet on the left and 10.5 feet on the right.
In the rear yard again, I'm sorry.
Rear yard from the decks is 29.2 feet, 34.1 feet from the building.
Got it, okay.
And I would point out that the existing condition, the existing house currently is oriented in a way that does have a non-conforming side on the left. I don't believe we're increasing that non-conformity.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, what is the footprint of the existing building? You know?
I believe, if we go back to the PPA abstract, we probably get a pretty good view of it. It's two slides.
I'm not, I don't need a number. It just seems to me that six units on a 5,000-square-foot lot is an awful lot. And I'm curious as to how, like, is this one and a half times the footprint double? You know, just, I'm just wondering how much more of lots, lots size is being used by this building?
I, it's slightly larger, Mr. Ehrlich, but not unlike other projects in the immediate vicinity that have been approved. In fact, taller buildings have been approved with smaller rear setbacks. By eliminating the accessory building in the rear that actually encroaches onto the neighbor's property, we are solving that condition. But it is slightly larger than the current footprint that's there now. This is a pretty generously sized two-family dwelling. But we believe that what we've tried to do is respond to the number of concerns that we did hear about setback in height. So we feel that it's consistent with, you know, what, what is generally happening in the area.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would go on record in opposition to this proposal. During the community process conducted by our liaison, Lena, we heard from a number of neighbors' concerns regarding density, number of units, and height. Sounds like the applicant has taken steps forward to address the height, but we still feel there's a lot of community opposition. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Michael Bonetti from the Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have letters of support. We also have letters of opposition.
And I have no raised hands, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, if I could respond just briefly, and I understand the elected officials' opposition. I do want to point out for the record that in direct response to our comments, we did lower the height. This was originally proposed as an eight-unit, four-story building. And we reduced that down to three with six units.
And I'll, I'll give you the usual that we, we don't really measure progress from where you start off, but mostly from what the zoning requires. So given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to deny without prejudice.
And I'll, I'll second that. I think it's, it's much closer to the street, so it's absorbing some of the additional, like, I think it's just, it's just too dense for this site. I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to oppose, Licorice.
Motion, motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 117-36549, Russell Street. This is to confirm occupancy as an existing single, consolidate parcels, form one new lot containing 3,523 square feet, and also change the occupancy from a one-family to a three-family. Directly front and side vertical additions. Violation is Article 62, Section 25. Roof structure restrictions, Article 62, Section 29, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 62, Section 8, side yards insufficient. And Article 62, Section 8, rear yards insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with an address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the applicant, Elon Sassoon. I also have the architect Evan Stellman from Colsa on the line as well. As was mentioned, the proposal is to consolidate three, oh, before I go on, sorry. We did remove the, as this advertised for height violations, we were able to remove during our deferral period because we've modified the project. We removed the height in stories and feet. So we are now below what the zoning code will allow, so I'll require, so I'll get into that when I go over the violation. I just wanted to point that out. So the proposal is to consolidate the three parcels and to change the occupancy from a one-family building, which you saw in the existing picture, to a three-family building, to renovate and build an addition that goes from the existing building to the front along Russell Street. This particular district is a 3F.
Sorry, can you, can you explain that again?
Yeah.
There is, where is, so is this building set, set back and then you're expanding it?
Yeah, if we could pull the pictures. Yeah, Madam Chair, so if you pull the pictures up, it'll give you, it's really out of place. The building, it's abandoned. It's set way in the back, right there, if you can see that. It has front yard, if you go back one more, sorry, right there. Thank you, Jeff. You can see it has front yard parking, doesn't line up with the other buildings. Our original proposal was to raise that back structure and build the three units on the front with parking underneath. The community was very concerned about the removal of that back structure because it abuts Avon Place. They did not want to see that demoed. It is an older building. So in working with them, we have agreed to build, to raise or dormer the back building, keeping it at three stories, but adding dormers to the sides, and then building the addition from the back to the front to line up with the other buildings. For our green space, we have agreed to keep the side lot, which is about 1,400 square feet of green space, which when we get into the site plan, you can see better, for our open space, which directly abuts Avon Place in the back. And the concern with raising that back building was that it could affect some of the buildings on Avon Place. So we, we went through this, went through the process to keep that and build it forward. It is a 3F district, and we would line up with the buildings to the left of us in terms of height. The layout of the new proposed building would be slab-on-grade. We were asked not to excavate at all, to put any parking in or go underground. So Unit 1 would be housed on the first floor. Proposed, that's a 1,448-square-foot unit, three-bedroom, two-bath. Unit 2 is on the second floor, 1,398-square-foot, three-bed, two-bath. And then Unit 3 on the third floor, 1,423-square-foot, three-bed, two-bath as well. Just as I had mentioned, in terms of violations, we eliminated the fourth story, and we also eliminated our height and feet. The building is now at 31 feet. What's allowed is 35, and we're at three stories, which is allowable under the code. The violations that we do still have, the minimum side yard is pre-existing violation. Two, two and a half, 2.5 would be required. We're at one, one foot, one inch off the property line to the left. Minimum rear yard, because we're leaving the building as is, is pre-existing as well. It's three feet, two inches. So because we're keeping that building, that would remain. And then we're not able to create parking. There is front yard parking now on the site. In the new plan, we would not be able to create any parking. And then we have a roof structure restriction because we are going up on that back building that we're keeping and basically dormering it.
So out of curiosity, why didn't you use the Avon Street building or the Avon Street address as your main building?
So on Avon, so that's a Russell Street address, but the Avon is a different street from Russell.
Got it. Um, so.
And we also had to agree not to go on any of the property. There is like a walkway that goes in the back along Avon. That was part of an agreement. They're very concerned about the properties. I think a lot of them historic and older along Avon Place.
I see, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. Can you just explain potentially the relationship in the rear yard? It seems that there's a large retaining wall or something behind? Because I think one of the things I'm a little concerned about is that the bedrooms there are all subterranean. So I, I guess the, the ground slopes up as you move toward the back? Is that, can you just make sure?
That's correct, Mr. Robinson. So there is a retaining wall in the back. We're not touching that. So if, you can see a better grade change as some of the pictures or some of the renderings in the plan show it kind of where the window is. But it does, it does the grade changes significantly in the back.
Is, is there, I mean, these.
And I think Evan, Evan might be on the call right now.
Just a little worried about we're burying the bedrooms into this hillside, basically, in the back, is what it feels like.
Yeah, is, I don't know if Evan is on the call or able to speak. I don't know. Madam Ambassador, if you happen to see an Evan Stillman? Stillman?
We can, we can keep going. I think it's just a concern. I want to make sure the board understands.
Um, Mr. Ambassador, can you at some point unmute Mr. Stillman? In the meantime, does the board have any other questions? No, okay, let's go.
Questions that Mr. Robinson asked.
I'm sorry?
Just the same questions that Mr. Robinson asked about.
Yeah, and following on that, it, I mean, I'm, it's not my project, but it does seem like you could potentially.
Madam Chair, I'm available now, I'm sorry.
There we go. Can you just explain the rear? You know, we don't like subterranean.
Yep. So if you go to sheet A 101, I can talk through it. So the existing structure is built into the grade. Right now, the elevation at Russell Street at the front is about 100, and Avon Place at the back left is about 110. So if you zoom in at the back right master bedroom, the grade at the area ways is about four and a half feet above the finished floor elevation. And our windows are about two feet above the finished floor elevation. So more than half of the windows are, are above average grade at that location.
So could you, could the, the, I'll just say the sort of area well So could you, could the, the, I'll just say the sort of area well that's sort of facing the street side, could that be removed and someone could egress out without having to climb out of a subterranean hole because of the, I'm just looking at the grading?
If we do that, the sill of the window would be too high for the building code. But we can adjust the window sill to minimize the depth of the area way.
Well, I think I'm trying to figure out if someone could get out of there and then walk down toward Russell Street without.
They could do that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Olick, you're comfortable with the response?
Not really, but keep going.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Caitlin Stapleton with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This project has had four abutters meeting and our office has received fifteen letters of opposition throughout the process, including one from the Charlestown Preservation Society. Most of the issues from the abutters are related to excavation and structural problems, architectural character and parking in the neighborhood. The developer did revise the plans multiple times in attempt to address these issues, but he could not come to a general consensus with the abutters. For these reasons, we would like to be on record in opposition. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Bonetti from the Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards. The councilor as well would like to share her opposition for this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have letters of opposition as well, as well.
I do have two raised hands here. We will start with Heidi. Heidi, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Sorry, go to another person. Rebecca, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, hello, Rebecca Moran. I live at two Avon Place and also own the garden lot at four Avon Place. And I just want to restate or put my support behind the concerns that have been expressed by the Charlestown Preservation Society, myself and my neighbors, and in support of what Councilor Edwards' office and the Mayor's office have had to say. In particular, our concerns.
So Rebecca, so Rebecca, you're basically in opposition then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Roberta, you've been unmuted. Can you state your address for the record, please? Your name and address?
Hi, I'm Roberta Freeman. I own a day Avon Place, which is about three feet from the rear of this structure that they're trying to raise the roof on. I'm in very, I'm in opposition of this all the way. I'm going to lose light view. My main concern is at the end of the last abutters meeting, they presented a geo study, which we didn't have a chance to review or ask questions about. And there's a lot of recommendations on that geo study concerning the integrity of all of our properties when they start doing this.
Thank you. Okay, are we good, Ms. Ambassador?
All right, just one more caller, Ryan Sutton, you've been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Ryan Sutton, five Russell Street in Charlestown. I wanted to clarify some first, though, as Attorney Drago said, this is not an abandoned building. If it's abandoned, it was abandoned by the developer. It was purchased from the previous owners. So it's only abandoned by any state because they've chosen to neglect it. With that said, a couple.
Let me ask you.
Please, Madam Chair, yes.
Yes, can you tell us whether you're in support or in opposition?
I'm absolutely in opposition. And can we ask one clarifying question? The attorneys told us that they could combine the historic lots, Avon Place, without permission, which struck us as odd, given it's a gas-lit street. So I, we didn't know if that is something that they have to get approval now, because that really caught us off guard, that they could combine historic, nonhistoric lot.
Okay, so just, okay, so given all this information, may I have a motion, please?
May I respond, Madam Chair?
Yes, very briefly.
So Madam Chair, yeah, that, that was, I'm not sure where that confusion is, but I think we were talking about just the lots, our own lots to combine.
I figured, you know, so, yeah.
But I think it was important to know, we, we really redesigned this entire project. An easier build would just be to build something on Russell Street, keeping this back building, because we were told there should be no excavation. There should be, you know, to keep that back building, so there'd be no demolition as well. Really left hand side.
So may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to deny for a number of reasons the community articulated, but I also really wish petitioners would stop bringing us projects with bedrooms in the underground, but motion to deny.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose, Licorice.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
On the next two cases, calling BOA one zero eight four six two two five twenty East Broadway. There's a companion case, BOA one zero eight four six two five five twenty East Broadway. This project will convert an existing one-family dwelling to a multifamily residential dwelling with four units by renovating the interior and the structure and constructing a four-story addition in the rear over the lower, lower level garage. The violation is Article sixty-eight, section eight, extensions into the rear yard. Article sixty-eight, section eight, insufficient side yard setback. Article sixty-eight, section twenty-nine, the roof deck access via head house. Article sixty-eight, section twenty-nine, the reconfiguration of the roof profile. Article sixty-eight, section thirty-three, off-street parking designed loading. Article fifty, Article sixty-eight, section eight, the height has been exceeded. This is for five twenty East Broadway. This is a single surface parking space accessed via five eighteen East Broadway. This could be by an easement at Suffolk County Register of deed. The violation is Article sixty-eight, section thirty-three, off-street parking and loading requirement. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, Attorney Joe Hanley, Mr. Michael T. Miller, twenty-eighth State Street in Boston. With me, beside me is the project architect, Anthony Pizzani from Pizzani and Associates. Also with us virtually are the proponent owners, Max and Donna Rans. Madam Chair, just quickly, if I may, as you'll see in the photographs, five twenty East Broadway, originally built as a boarding house and formerly a funeral home with a single-family unit. The Rans have been owners, occupants there, raised their families there for the past twenty years. They are looking to do a renovation and rear addition. The front of the house, as you see it, will remain unchanged and the purpose of the addition is to allow them to downsize as now empty nesters and remain in the neighborhood and create three additional residential units, which are sized to accommodate family-sized units and also have the ability to have some space for their now-grown children. In particular, you'll see in the project overview, the proposal is to go from what is essentially two units, it's a single family with another dwelling unit that it's being used for now and has been for twenty years. And it's to extend that into four residential units with four parking spaces. They're accessible by the back over an easement, and that was the first zoning case that was read in. There's no parking on the easement, just to correct that. That's just for vehicular access and that's exactly what the easement allows for. So of, of the units, as I mentioned, unit one is a three-bedroom, twenty-one-hundred-square-foot unit, and that would be the home for the Rans, who are the homeowners to remain. And then there is a three-bedroom that's fourteen hundred and sixty square feet, a three-bedroom that's seventeen hundred and fifteen, and only one, one bedroom that's seven hundred and thirty. Of those units, two are duplexes and one is a floor through. We're also proposing to create private open space at the roof. And we have proposed and agreed to certain conditions for the hours of operation and the usage of that space to make sure they're operated responsibly. The Rans will remain as owners, owner occupants. And for the zoning, Madam Chair, we are located in a multifamily residential. The existing building is smaller.
Mr. Hanley, can you tell us again about that roof, roof deck? How is it accessed?
Yes, so there is a head house, and I can have Mr. Pizzani take you through that part of the presentation.
Yes, if we could go to drawing A three point one, which is a section. It, okay, slow down for a moment, please. Okay, these are the plans of the building. We do have a side, one side yard violation, which is on the left side of the building, and that is because the garage, which is ninety percent below grade, is on that side lot line on the left side. The lot line for this project is to the face of each of the building.
Mr. Pizzani, can you please talk about that roof deck and access to that roof?
Okay, yes. If you could go to A three point one, which would be right after these drawings. The roof deck, there's an elevator that goes up to the roof deck. And a stair, a stair that goes to the roof deck. There are two roof decks, one to the left, which is on the existing building, and that's why we automatically have a height violation, because the existing building is thirty-eight feet, four inches high. The second roof deck is on the addition, which is thirty-five feet high.
Compliant.
Which is compliant. And one of the issues that has come about as a result of a community meeting, we are willing to not allow the elevator to go all the way to the roof deck, but to simply to the floor below. And therefore, the elevator would have simply a elevator override of only four feet, and that would allow us to, in fact, also use a hatch for the stair.
Okay, and tell us about the garage. Access to the garage is from, did you say five eighteen East Broadway?
From, there's an, there's an easement that actually comes off of.
Five eighteen, which is the build, which is the property to, if you're facing the site to the left or to the west. And that is an existing enforceable easement that was granted. That building to the left of us is a four-unit, also a four-unit building that's taller and more dense. But the, the use of the easement is exactly what it's allowed for, and that's for, it allows for up to four vehicles to pass over in order to access the develop this site.
The garage is best shown on drawing A one point one. If you could go back, there we go.
Okay, and then, and then the next question is, does the addition essentially double the size of the existing building, the rear addition?
No, the existing building has an FAR of point eight seven. The total project has an FAR of point one four nine.
And what's required is one point five, so we're compliant with the floor area ratio. I'd also note, Madam Chair, that the addition in the rear is within the rear yard setback as well, which is required to be twenty, and we're thirty feet off.
Well, we're thirty feet off at the face of the garage. We're fifty-five feet off to the face of the rear decks. We're sixty-three feet off to the face of the building.
Thank you.
This is the lot that's a hundred and fifty-three feet.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
The plans are good. I, I think Mr. Pizzani is addressing my concern, which was the elevator override and head house. If that can come down and access for the hatch, I think we're, no questions from me.
Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, Secretary here, sorry. Regarding this, Mr. D'Amico has spoken this. I'd like to put his comments in for the record.
Yes, please.
In his opinion, the smaller space inside the proposed garage should be removed to improve maneuverability. Also, any new curb cuts should be a minimum of ten feet.
Okay.
If I may, if I may address that, the small space, referred to as the small space inside the garage, actually has a garage door directly to that car. So that car simply comes in and out. There is no maneuverability required for that car. And the three remaining cars is absolutely adequate maneuverability.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Fling's office. The counselor would like to go on recording support due to through public process, which included several meetings with both the neighbors and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, as well as good faith compromises by the proponent on the project and associated quality of life concerns. The counselor appreciates the proponent's willingness to compromise in good faith with neighbors, and the proposed units were reduced from seven to four and also included three-bedroom units in an effort aimed at helping growing families remaining South Boston. Moreover, the proponent also reduced the project's FAR number of variances, the deck number and their sizes to improve privacy. They also realigned side windows at the abutters' request and placed a green space on top of the one-story garage. In addition, the proponent agreed to address quality of life concerns on the decks by agreeing to provisions regarding hours of use, limits of capacity, noise barriers, installing cameras for the owner of monitor and no fire pizza grill. Lastly, we respectfully ask that the proponent continue to work closely with neighbors and the CBI group in good faith of outstanding issues related to water runoff and tree canopy. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council at large, Michael Flaherty. As you know, Article sixty-eight, when through a recent and extensive reselling process, as such, the council's approach has been consistent in not supporting variance under Article sixty-eight. The proponent has worked to address many of the abutters' concerns. However, direct abutters still have outstanding concerns. As Council Flaherty's hope, if the project passes, the proponent will continue to work to resolve these issues with the neighbors before, during, and after construction.
I'll try, have to raise hands if we don't have any letters.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, we have an abutter that wants to speak. She called in from her phone, but she cannot.
Ambassador, is, is, is Jessica on or Tom?
My computer froze. I just logged that and logged back in. If someone can make me the.
Go ahead.
I think the host privileges was changed over to someone else, but once I get them, I can go to the comments.
Yes, good, this is Tom. You're actually logged in twice as Jessica, and so you, you have the host privileges under the other account that you're logged in under currently.
Oh, so I can't hear you, Tom. I'm sorry, what'd you say?
So you, you currently are logged in under two accounts.
Under two accounts?
You have one account and you have.
Just on my work computer, I don't know what's going on. Or is there any?
I got Jessica, I'll try to.
You try it on your end. I can't see the, it doesn't give me the option to.
Hey, are you host now? Sorry, I accidentally made the other one.
Okay, there we go. All right. And I'm all set, so I'll go to raised hands. All right, so we do have quite a few raised hands. I'll start with Joy. You've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Joy Lee, and I live at six seventy-four East Broadway, South Boston. I also own a business on East Broadway. As a neighbor, I support the runs of proposal to convert this project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Judy, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, I'm Judy Rumble, five eighteen East Broadway. I'm the president of the condo association, representing four owners, direct abutters. All four owners are in complete opposition of this project. It's too dense. We're concerned about the infrastructure of our property, light, air, all sixty, all Article sixty-eights are actually going to affect our property tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Michael, you've been unmuted. Michael Capella, I'm sorry, Capellano.
Michael Capellano, I'm a co-owner of four nineteen East Third Street, which directly accounts the rear of this project. I'm in complete opposition to the project because I've been trying to work with the Rans to essentially come up with some solutions to concerns I've been raising regarding water runoff control, which will. which will definitely happen as a result of the fact that my property is about thirty feet below in elevation from where the property is now, and the fact that they're bringing rain lead that's that much closer to my property. I have an existing retaining wall that I've spoken about in the past that I've asked them to review and basically make.
Thank you, thank you. May I hear from somebody else? Uh, anybody who's already had a turn at the mic, please lower your hand.
Michael Norton?
Yes, my name is Michael Norton. I'm a lifelong resident of the South Boston, and I support this project.
Thank you. Okay, and lastly, Michael Cabral?
Yes, thank you. Attorney Michael Cabral for five twenty-four East Broadway condo association. My clients are direct abutters to the project. They are adamantly opposed. The project is much too dense. The only reason that the applicants are able to meet their FAR ratio is because they're putting a massive decking system to the rear of the house.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
May I, may I hear from somebody else, Mr. Ambassador?
Yeah.
Um, everybody who's spoken, please lower your hand.
James O'Donohue, I, um, I think you may be having some connectivity issues. I see your, you sent me a message in the chat, but it won't allow me to unmute you, so.
Okay.
I believe that's everyone. Hi, if you do want to.
So given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second, Legris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, it's now, it's, sorry, go ahead, uh, sorry. So, uh, it's now one forty-two. Uh, we will, we will reconvene at two. We're going to, uh, pause for a few minutes.
I'm still here, Madam Chair. You haven't lost me yet.
Okay, good, good, good. Mr. Ehrlich?
Halfway out the door, but I'm still here.
Okay. Ms. Dong?
Present.
Here still. Mr. Rogiro?
I'm here.
Excellent. Mr. Robinson?
Here.
And Mr. Legris?
Yep, kind of hanging in there.
Kind of hanging in, okay. And Mr. Hampton?
Still here, Madam Chair.
Okay, good. The team's all here. Let's move.
All right, I gotta call the next two cases. Calling BOA one one eight three zero two one, two fifty-nine Gold Street. There's a companion case, BOA one one eight three two three six, two fifty-nine Gold Street. This is for owners' arguments of two fifty-nine, unit three and four, to build a roof deck. Violation is Article sixty-eight, section twenty-nine, roof structure restriction. Article sixty-eight, section eight, the villain is excessive in feet. Article sixty-eight, section eight, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, The rear yard is insufficient. And for building code, the owner arguments of 259 Gold Street Units 3 and 4 to build a roof deck. The violation is a 9th Edition 780 CMR 1011 stairways, 1011.12.2 roof access. Where a stairway is provided to a roof of four or more stories, access to that roof shall be provided through a penthouse complying with Section 1510.2. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, hi, this is Dave Nado and my wife Mary Lowe. We're the owners of Unit 4 at 259 Gold Street.
Okay, as is...
Hi.
Go ahead.
You have Matthew Brusinski and Kelly Hoover here as well. We're owners of Unit 3.
Okay, are you represented by an architect by any means, by any chance?
Yes, Doug Stefanoff, I believe, is on the meeting.
Okay, Doug, please put your name and address on the record and as our usual procedure, please respond to the building code violation.
Okay, sure. So, Dave Nado?
No Doug.
Oh, are they? Are you looking for Doug? I'm sorry.
Sorry, I am looking for Doug.
Sorry about that.
To respond to the building code. Doug, are you on?
Yes, he was just elevated for panelists. Let me just make sure. Can I unmute himself?
Like he's muted.
Oh, okay.
Doug, are you on?
Doug, make sure to click the unmute bottom of the screen.
Oh, enough. You see his, I don't see his.
Oh, there you go. All right.
Okay, there you go.
Hi.
Doug, put your name and address on the record and then please respond to the building code violation first.
Yes, ma'am. Doug Stefanoff, Stefanoff Architects, business address of 423 West Broadway, Suite 404. Here before 259 Gold Street. The building code issue? Yes, so I will ask that we do proceed with this. The building does have hatches built already for access, but as per code, relief would be granted for a building of this size.
Okay, may I have a motion, Mr. Robinson?
Yes, make a motion to approve.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, Mr. Stefanoff, can you talk through the roof decks?
Yes, ma'am. The proponents, both owner-occupied, top-floor condominium owners. First, let me start. This was before the board back in 2017. The building was approved with no necessary provisos for the deck. And the building was built. The roof decks were not approved at the time, subject to the owners coming back seeking their own approval. So here we are with the owners seeking the approval to build the roof decks on top, the exclusive use for each of the units below.
Okay, and that's two hatch access points?
Correct, ma'am.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good. The hatches are existing. It's fairly straightforward.
Any questions from the board?
Just curious why the hatches are existing. Was this in anticipation?
Yeah, they were actually part of the original set and were approved back in the time. It wasn't flagged at the time. I'm not sure why. But as per our recent developments, we're not chasing head houses. Hatches are desired over head houses, so that's why we went after the building code relief.
Yeah, no, no, that I understand. We've been very consistent about that. I guess my question is something different, which is it's odd to put in a hatch with nothing up there, and so...
No, you're quite right. We did anticipate this, but at the time, there were no owners involved. So the neighbors didn't want to approve the roof decks without the owners present.
Got it, got it. Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in opposition of this proposal just based on the Civic Association's standard opposing of any roof decks in their area. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Ana Calderon from Councilor Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition based on feedback from neighbors. While the proponents have made efforts and signed an agreement with the condo association to limit loud noises related to a roof deck from the time being 11:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., neighbors remain concerned that this will not go far enough to mitigate negative impacts to the quality of life. Roof decks in the neighborhood have long been a source of loud noise at all hours, disturbance and trash removal issues, which were exacerbated by the pandemic. Neighbors have expressed that granting approval for another roof deck in the city side neighborhood would negatively impact the quality of life. South Boston has endorsed significant issues with loud house parties with roof decks, often the location of such parties. Neighbors are therefore rightly concerned about having a roof deck close to them and how it can exacerbate the issues with noise. Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I respond to that?
No, hold on. Anybody else, Mr. Ambassador?
Secretary here. We do have letters of support. We also have letters of opposition.
Yes.
Just gonna check with Michael. His hand was raised earlier. Michael, are you looking to give testimony on this proposal?
Well, it sounds as though we're gonna allow, you know, someone to talk.
Hold on, Michael. Put your name and address on the record and tell us if you are in support or in opposition of this proposal at 259 Gold Street.
Well, I'm Michael Capolano. I'm at 419 East Third Street in South Boston. And I'm basically somewhat surprised. I'm quite probably in opposition to it, but it sounds as though we just approved one earlier for 520 East Broadway. So I'm kinda confused how some get approved and some don't get approved. I understand.
So we're taking testimony right now, so we haven't made a decision. But thank you, thank you for registering your opinion.
Victor, you've been unmuted. You state your name and address, please. Hi, Victor. Okay, never mind. Should be all set.
Okay, are we just having a hard time connecting with Victor?
Yeah, I can unmute him, but it does... Victor, can you hear us? He's been unmuted. He lowered his hand, so he may be all set.
Okay, okay, so we have the standard opinion from the from the mayor's office and the city councilor. May I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries, and we trust that these owners will not will adhere by the co-fines of 11 to 3, or whatever the times are, okay?
Well, very much. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 120-254-426 Elmore Street. There is a companion case, BOA 120-254-721 Mayfair Street. This is for 26 Elmore. Erected a three-family dwelling with roof deck. The violation is Article 50, Section 29. Lot size to erecting dwelling is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, Lot width is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, Lot frontage is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, The pulley ratio is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, Usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, The front yard setback is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, The side yard setback is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, Rear yard setback is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 43, Ostrich requirement is insufficient. This is for 21 Mayfair. The application to subdivide the lot at 21 Mayfair in conjunction with 26 Elmore Street in Roxbury. The violation is Article 50, Section 29. The rear yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small. My business address is of 51 Dobson Road, Platoon, Mass. With me today is Leticia and Delance Lewis, who are the owners of the property. And Jessica, I don't know if they have been already, but can you get them upgraded to panelists?
What's the name? I'm sorry?
Delance Lewis.
Delance Lewis, okay. Yeah, they should be... Yep. Yeah, he's... Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, members of the board, we're here today seeking relief to subdivide the property at 21 Mayfair Street and erect a three-family dwelling at an address given to us by the Inspection Services Department of 26 Elmore Street. The property at...
Counsel, just hold on a second, okay? So, this is currently a through lot. Tell us what the size of... First of all, what is the zoning? And what is currently on 21 Mayfair?
Okay, so the current zoning, zoning sub-district is a 3F 4,000. Currently at 21 Mayfair Street, there is a one-family dwelling on an 11,000 square foot lot.
And then with the proposed subdivision, what would the lot at 21 Mayfair be?
It will be reduced by 3,022 square feet, because that's what the new lot at 26 Elmore Street will be.
I mean, so 11,000 square feet?
Yes, so approximately...
So what will it be? What will 21 Mayfair be proposed?
Approximately 8,000 square feet.
Okay, so, and then tell us about 8, 9, 10, 11. So then Elmore will be proposed at 3,000 square feet?
Yes, 3,200 square feet, yep, 26 Elmore Street.
3,200, okay. 77,800 square feet, okay? So, why isn't it equally divided so that at least the lot at 26 would not have this many violations?
Well, if you go to the plot plan, the site plan, the way the house is situated at 21 Elmore Street, it's sort of centered in the center of the lot itself, a little bit more to the rear. So the subdivision occurs at the rear of the property of 21 Elmore Street. And it would front on, excuse me, Mayfair Street, and it would front on Elmore Street. That's a picture of it.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay, so tell us about the proposal at 26 Elmore.
The proposal at 26 Elmore Street would be three family dwelling. Unit 1 will consist of three bedrooms, two baths, and will be approximately 1,100 square feet. Unit 2 will also consist of bedrooms, two baths, at about 1,100 square feet. And Unit 3 will be three beds, two baths, at about 1,140 square feet. Violations, Madam Chair, are lot width, lot frontage. The requirement is 55. We are proposing 35. FAR, the zoning sub-district, is 0.8. We are proposing 1.1. Front yard setback requirement is 20 feet. We are proposing 10.
Is that... Sorry, is that modal?
Yes, it will be in line with other buildings that are currently on Elmore Street.
Okay.
Side yard setback requirement is 10 feet. We have proposing 5. The rear yard setback is, the requirement is 30 feet, and we are proposing 13 to the rear stairs.
Oh, okay. And of course, there's no off-street parking proposed, from what I can gather?
No, there is off-street parking. There is an easement in the driveway in the rear of 21 Mayfair Street that will go to the rear of 26 Elmore Street. There's already an existing curb cut there. And there will be an easement granted in the rear of the property.
And how many spaces are proposed at the rear of Elmore?
The rear, that's correct.
Yeah, how many spaces?
Three.
Three. And it looks like you're proposing occupancy in the basement, are you?
Madam Chair, in the basement, there will be storage, and there is a little bit of living space, but there is no bedrooms in the basement.
And what is that living space proposed to be?
Just a family room.
Okay, and tell us about the roof deck?
Yep, the roof deck is access through the rear of the property, up the rear stair. And it's approximately 12 by 12.
And access to all units?
Yes.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are fine, correct. The lower level of the three-family is shown as living. I don't really have a plan, I believe, of the easement and the drive and the parking and how that's all working. Doesn't... I don't have one. I'm not sure it didn't come through. But not exactly sure how they're gonna get three spaces behind the proposed new project with columns and things, but...
So there, it was submitted to Inspection Services Department about two or three weeks ago. But currently, there is a driveway, if you scroll down just a little bit, to the right of the property. And the easement will go all the way back into the rear of the post-three-family dwelling.
Okay, and is it going to be surface parking or garage parking?
Surface parking, Madam Chair.
Okay, and then the other question, it's more a statement than a question, is that, you know, as Mr. Robinson pointed out, we are not disposed... We are predisposed not to approve any basement occupancy in new construction? Just so that it's clear upfront to you and your client, okay?
That's fine, Madam Chair. And if this were to be approved, then we would be amenable to removing the basement occupancy space.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Jason Gamp from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in opposition to this proposal, highlighting a few key statements from the Maywood, Elmore and Kensington Association. They feel that the design does not fall in line with the rest of the neighborhood. They additionally highlighted the loss of trees and green space. They feel that the addition of a three-family plus a roof deck is too much and too dense in this location and highlight that parking will definitely become an issue as well on not only their street, but surrounding streets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We do have letters of support. We also have the letters of opposition as well.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
I did have it. Madam, I don't know if I clicked it. This is Joseph Feaster. May I be heard on this particular matter? I thought I had hit Ray's hand.
Yes, please go ahead. Put your name and address on the record.
Certainly. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, member of the boards, Joseph Feaster. In this capacity, I'm utilizing my address at 51 Elmore Street in Roxbury. I am a butler to this project, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Mayfair, Elmore, Kensington Street Association. Mr. Gamp has just stated what was the basis for the opposition by the Neighborhood Association. I would just add to that two matters. One is that the applicant has adequate use of the existing property. I've lived on that street since 1978. I even knew the previous owners, which were family members of the Reverend Ray Hammond. The presentation today of the parking spaces never came before the butlers or the Neighborhood Association. So, because parking was a concern, and this is not something that we were made aware of. I believe the discussion at that time was that parking was going to be from coming off of Mayfair Street, I believe. I could be correct.
Mr. Feaster? I'm sorry to cut you off, but it's been a long day. Um, I'm sorry to cut you off, but it's been a long day.
Oh, I know, so I, I can close my remarks, thank you.
So we noted, we noted your opposition as we did from the community group. Anybody else to speak on this proposal?
Madam Chair and Board members, I'd like to speak in response.
Go right ahead.
This is Letitia Raymond at 21 Mayfair Street. I am the owner of the property, I've been here for 14 years. And I just want to point out that we have received 16 letters of support that was submitted from neighbors, and a lot of them are direct the butlers of Mayfair Street and the Elmore property, we submitted that. And I just, in response to the Mayor's Office, in characterization of the neighborhood, the Elmore Street is primarily three-family homes.
Yeah, um, so, um, okay, thank you. So we have heard from all parties involved, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, can I just respond to one other thing as well?
Yes.
Um, just in a response, the issue with regards to the parking was talked about at the meetings, I know, at least at the butlers meeting. And then, just, just, just to clarify, just in context of the neighborhood, there are a number of threes on Kensington Street, and there are a number of threes on Elmore Street that already exist.
Yes, okay, so, um, yeah, so everything's noted. We know that Elmore is, so let's get a motion out there. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPA Design Review. And I, I, we need BTD or somebody, we just need to confirm the parking works. I'm just, I mean, I think I see the access point now from Mayfair. But we just don't have the drawing that kind of clarifies that.
And, and, and we can provide, I can provide that.
Counselor, please, this board is in, in, in process here.
I'm, I'm gonna second that motion by Mr. Robinson. Secretary here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
I'm opposed.
I too am opposed, so the motion doesn't carry, and it's been denied. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can we have that denied without prejudice?
No, I'm sorry, that's when the motion doesn't take, where it's denied. It doesn't mean you can't come back with another proposal. It's just that we don't want to see this proposal in its, in the same form, okay? Good luck, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good day, thank you.
All the next two cases, calling BOA 124-9236, 40 to 42 Terrace Street. There is a companion case, BOA 124-9238, 132 Terrace Street. This is, the purpose is the property is currently being built and permitted as affordable artist live-work housing under existing zoning. The violation is Article 59, Section 18, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Madam Chair and Board members, the purpose for 132 is the same, and the violation is the same. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Stephen Meyer, and that's 3326 Washington Street, Jamaica Plain. So I'm here along with Joe Backer from Department of Neighborhood Development and Julia Ryan from the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture. As we mentioned before, when we presented-
So, um, okay, so we, we just had this case, was it at the last meeting? Where this project was proposing to have ground floor artists, artists' display ca- space and artist's live-work space in the upper units? We needed clarification from Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture that in fact, they are comfortable with giving up these affordable artist's live-work housing to the general, general affordable pool of residents. So may I hear from the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture that in fact, for, for this, for these proposed, for these two new developments, they are basically giving us a message that in fact, it's okay to take them off the artist's live-work list and put it in the general pool. So please, your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Julia Ryan, I'm the Artist Resource Manager for the city of Boston. I'm here on behalf of the Chief of Arts and Culture and our cabinet. We have been working very closely with DND and with the developers on this project for the past few years now. And we, our office is supportive of the home ownership opportunities for artists as created through the Terrace Street project. However, we are aware this opportunity sits within a wider, general affordable housing need in Boston. We've been engaged in this process on the understanding that these units were to be allocated through an artist preference only, and that if no suitable artist buyers could be found for these units, that they would be made available to the general affordable housing pool. Our, our support of this variance is offered on the basis that there are sufficient mechanisms in place to ensure the artist's preference is reinstated and applied at the point of each resale of these units. And we are sufficiently assured by DND that these mechanisms will be in place, including a requirement to engage our team in resale processes regarding marketing to artists with the artist's housing certification.
So I think the issue that this raises, or your comments raise for us, is that then, I suppose that every time you go through a resale process and it goes back to artist's live-work, should it go back to artist's live-work, then the applicant or the owner would need to come to this board for relief. And we don't want to be in the business of, for every turnover, being in the position to approve that or disapprove that, that relief. So just, let me ask the applicant, how many of these units at each of these addresses were dedicated to artist's live use?
So the, the plan from the beginning was that it was affordable housing with the artist's preference. That's for all units, so seven units in either building. With the understanding that they would go to the wider pool, the way it's set up, as we've discussed with Julie in the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture, and Joe Backer from DND can speak to this more extensively as well, is the process by which, again, it wouldn't be a, a change of zoning every time, it would just be a step in the sales process with the Boston Home Center and the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture.
Why, why is it coming to us now? I just want to make sure that the DND and the Office of Arts and Culture figure out a way to keep the Board of Appeal out of the process of going through these machinations each time something changes.
Yes, so the reason that it's come back-
So let me ask DND, as the owner of the property, as the seller of this property, what is the plan moving forward to keep the Board of Appeal out of, out of each of these, out of this process beyond just approving the use?
Sure, thanks. So what we have been working with the developer and with the Office of Arts and Culture to establish is a process that will be dovetailed with our existing eligible purchaser certification for the resale of any affordable unit. And we are updating the documents for both buildings to ensure that anytime a seller seeks to sell their unit, they will have to notify the Office of Arts and Culture so that that unit can be marketed directly to the pool of certified artists that the office keeps in close contact with. And that process will be, again, certified by our department's compliance team to ensure that the selected purchaser is eligible under both the affordability and income requirements, and also that the seller made the best effort to locate an artist.
So the, the, I go back to the point of how is the Board of Appeal going to, I mean, we are committed, and I've had long conversations with Cara about this, about having artist's live-work space, and she has made it clear that the way to accommodate it is in new construction. And so this was one of the early cases that came through. We approved it for artist's live-work, and then there's a step back. And so is, is it then some other processes that the city needs to have in place so the Board of Appeal is not put in a position of having to backtrack our approval?
Let me speak to that quickly.
I'm perfectly fine with us saying, oh yeah, you know, that's fine, but, I, you know, it puts us in an awkward position, because then all of a sudden, you will have other developments coming through where people are backtracking on their commitment to artist's live-work.
Okay, if I can speak to that, so a couple of items, just to explain, you had asked earlier why this is coming up now. As it's shown in the PDF as well, basically, it's a clerical error unfortunately that occurred. We made, the multifamily variance was always on the documents from the earliest phase. A slight divine, design revision was made to adjust building heights due to neighborhood feedback. And when they, the documents were reprocessed, because that variance was not explicitly needed for the artist's live-work portion, it was erroneously left off of the updated documents, which was not noticed until after the hearing. So that's the, the timing of it. In terms of the mechanism and how to keep-
Uh, yeah, the, the, I think the issue falls right back into the city's hands if they are certifying artist's live-work space. But on these two projects, I think the applicant has made, made an argument for, for a clerical error. So may, is, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The pla- the plans are good, just as before.
Yep, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Molly Griffin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. We hosted a butlers meeting on August 24th. And the applicant addressed concerns raised by members of the community appropriately. And, you know, they've worked well with the community, and we believe this is a really great opportunity for artists in the Mission Hill neighborhood. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board, this is Lauren Brody from City Council, Kenzie Bach's office. Counselor Bach has spoken with DND and is comfortable that the current resolution they and Arts and Culture are proposing today does a good job of balancing the urgent need to prioritize artists with a high priority on making sure that these units are filled in the midst of a housing crisis. So she supports their proposed resolution. Thank you.
Ms. Masseter, are we good?
Yes, I just want to make sure it wasn't no letters, not, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Can you approve?
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All the next case, calling BOA 118-4796, 12 R Plain Street. This is a change of art from existing carriage house into a single family dwelling. Construct a new exterior stairway, a new second floor with new roof structure. The violation is Article 65, Section 42.13, two or more dwellings on the same lot. Article 65, 69, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 65, 69, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 65, 69, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is David Higgins with an address of 20 Plain Street in Dorchester. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, so please go ahead. Are you still proposing two more dwellings on the same lot?
Yes, Madam Chairman, let me, let me continue. This, this is an existing carriage house at 12 R Plain Street. At the moment, we, we have four violations, which, which is two, two or more lots on the same, two or more dwellings on the same lot, you know?
Uh, so Mr. Higgins, you've been before us before, so tell us about what's in the main building.
Okay.
How many units in the main building?
That, that, that's the building, building to the, to the front of, of 12 R, is that, that's a two, the, the main building, the existing main building is a two-family right now. I'm hoping to get, get approvals for, you know, the carriage house at the rear.
And tell us what the zoning district is that this is in?
This is, it's zoning district is F1-5,000.
One F- one F-5,000? And how large, and how large is this lot?
This lot is 12,600 square feet at the moment.
Okay, and so tell us, uh, tell us which sheet we should go at, to, we should look at, to look at the main house and the carriage house on the lot.
Okay, well, it can go to A1, which is, which is the very first one, which is the, which is the carriage house, which is the first floor. Madam Chair, if you, if you can see, it has, it has two, it has, the proposal is a two-car garage on, on the right-hand side, and on the left-hand side has a living room and one of the, one of the three bedrooms and a, and a bathroom on the, on the first floor. And, and beside the garage is a, a utility room where I propose to have the furnace, and I propose to sprinkle this particular building, because it's close to the lot. I have, I have, I've built a couple of these carriage houses before, and I always thought it's the best way to go.
So Mr. Higgins, so, um, the question, what is the question that I have? It's getting late, I'm-
Yeah, I know, last page, Madam Chair, the last page is, is a site plan, so you can see the violation.
Okay. Sorry, Madam Chair, it's been a long day for everyone.
Yeah, so that, so then the upper floor will have two bedrooms?
Correct, yeah, the upper floor has two bedrooms, kitchen, living room, and approximately 1,200 square feet on the top floor. The bottom floor has 600 square feet, and the garage is like 450 square feet. The, the total amount of living space in this particular carriage house would be approximately 1,800 square feet.
So did this, did this, uh, has 12 R Pa- Plain Street, or 12th Plain Street been before this board in the past?
Madam Chair, it has not. I've, I, I own properties close to this that has been to this board, has been to the board on more than one occasion.
Right, and so tell us about the existing garage. Is that, is, I mean, because I'm, my worry is that you have a 12,600 square foot lot, and incrementally you'll be before us perhaps to switch that garage into another unit or something. So I just need to understand how, how this is, what, what's your long-term plan on this?
Yeah, you got, Madam Chair, you're talking about the garage to, to the right of the carriage house, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, Madam Chair, I, I, I would think down the road that, you know, I may, I may come to this board to make that a, a home office of some sort, but at the present moment, you know, I, I'd like to try and get this main carriage house fixed up and repaired, I think it would be a great addition to the neighborhood. The, the, as I said, the garage, it, it's, it will be a functioning two-car garage for, for all the property at the moment. And, you know, going forward, if and when I do go to the board with something, I, I have to go through the neighborhood, and we'll see what they have to say about it before I move any further.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good, very straightforward, no questions from me.
Any questions from the board?
I'm, I'm just trying to remember why this, why this came before us, but why didn't we act on it before?
Uh, yes, hi, Mark. This, this particular lot did not come before, before you, had not come before you, but number 18 Plain Street was, was-
This is a rediscussion, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, this, no, it, it was, I, I did, I deferred it on, on a number of occasions, because I was continuing to have feedback and, and discussions with, with neighbors.
So, Mark, right now, there's currently one house built at 18, there's one under construction right next to it, and this is a separate proposal.
Okay.
And who did, who did 18 Plain, Jeff, do you remember?
I believe David did, didn't you, David?
Yes, Jeff, I did, I, I, Madam Chair, I just forgot to update everybody, I, I have, I, I, I doing what I can do as of right on, on, on the, on them lots. I'm building single families, I, I want completed, I have a second one under construction.
Okay, okay. Um, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Twin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted a butlers meeting for the applicant on May 24th this year. And the butlers expressed concerns about having two residential properties on- And the Butters expressed concerns about having two residential properties on one lot, especially with unclear direction on how many units would be housed here. So at this time, our office would like to go on record in opposition. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have letters of opposition, we also have letters of support.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
I'll second that, Eric.
All those in favor?
Do we need design review?
No, hold on, all those in favor?
Yes. Do we need design review?
Um, yeah, probably.
Yeah, absolutely.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll, I'll log myself in as opposed because I'm generally opposed to two buildings on the same lot. So motion carries.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 118 5582, 12 George Street. This is a confirmed occupancy as an existing single family and change occupancy to a townhouse with three residential units and erect two residential units in addition to the rear of the current structure. Violation is Article 69, Section 8, Townhouse three units, use is forbidden. Article 69, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9.3, the dimensions of the location of the main entrance. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, the business address of 51 Adoption Road for Entry Mass. Madam Chair, we're here today seeking relief to change legal occupancy from a one-family dwelling to three townhouse-style units. Zoning sub-district is a 2F 5,000. Our lot size is 10,140 square feet. Violations are, townhouse is a forbidden use, the 2F 5,000 zoning sub-district. Rear yard requirement is 40 feet, we have 26 feet. And the location of the main entrances. If you go to the first slide, Rakiya, you'll see that the entrance for two of the properties is within, within the site of the property. And the existing property in the front is a one-family, that'll be obviously dehabbed. They will have to put the two on the side. We do have parking. Each, each unit has its own parking space within, within the unit inside the garage. And we are proposing some additional parking in the rear of the property on the paved, paved driveway in the rear.
Um, and.
Madam Chair, just for, just as an FYI, the required FAR is 0.5, we are at 0.2, and we are not cited for that. Units will consist of three bedrooms, half baths, and are approximately 2,000 square feet units each.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good. No question on what the proposal is.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Robinson, is there any basement, basement space in there?
Not in the, not in the addition, I'm sorry, not in the addition, it looks like, I mean, there is basement space, but there's no living space down there, sorry. Just lower level space.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Put on record in support of this proposal with a request for BPA design review. The ONS office conducted a Butters meeting on May 18th. There were some concerns raised regarding parking, snow removal, and emergency vehicle access. We know the attorney, Derek Small, has been working with them and added some visitor parking spaces to address many of those concerns. We also went to the East River Street Neighborhood Association, who expressed similar concerns and felt more comfortable with supporting the project if there was BPA design review. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
A motion to approve with design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
You too.
On the last case of the day, calling BOA 120 9461, 29 Priscilla Road. This is a job, this is a rough inspection, and the building inspector realized the scope of work required a long form. Violation is Article 51, the Florida, Article 9, I mean, Section 9. The floor area ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Jonathan Katz, 29 Priscilla Road in Brighton.
So, Mr. Katz, tell us what you're proposing to do.
So we're proposing to finish the basement. There is a Unit 2, which is the second and third floor, and we're proposing to finish the basement downstairs, which has a direct staircase, private staircase for Unit 2 from the, in the back of the house, which runs from the kitchen on the second floor all the way down to the basement with a landing on the first floor, which is an egress in the back door.
So this is connecting the second floor unit to the basement. We heard from you before, why were you deferred?
I think, I think you wanted me to consider the usage in terms of like maybe my family moving onto the first floor or something like this.
Yeah.
And, and we, and I'm just to restate the usage to refresh the browser here. You know, we have eight children, and we use the room, we use, we have, my home office is, is in the room there. And, and with Zoom and COVID and everything, obviously, it's very difficult. I tutor people and.
So the bottom line is, we have very much, a lot of concerns about having occupancy in the basement. And more specifically, especially if you have children in the basement and you're as adults on the top floor, or whatever it is, you know, there's, there's just, there, there might be just health and safety issues. And tell us again, I forget the details from your last presentation. What's the floor-to-ceiling height and what's the floor-to-sill height?
Sure, so we need, as, as you can see in the records here, in the proposed seconds, if you can just go up, up one slide, I believe, proposed basement. It is, if you zoom it a little bit, on the lower right hand, there's the window sill of 24 inches from the floor. And it would be a six-foot, sorry, a five-foot window. That would be 60 inches, so it would be, we would have the required seven-feet ceiling height.
Seven-feet ceiling height?
Yeah, we would, we would meet that seven-foot ceiling height, correct?
Okay, um, okay, um.
There's also, the, the, this primary usage would be for an office and a guest room. So the idea is to.
But, but I think when looking at a plan that says proposed basement plan that has a bedroom with a connected bath, and I see two bedrooms in there?
Correct. We are, we, we host a lot of guests as part of my job and role in the community. So a lot of them are overnight for the Jewish Sabbath, and they stay for the weekend. For the synagogues, we host a lot of guests, and this is a great way that we can be hospitable. And so it's important to us that we have a bathroom there. And also, as I mentioned before, my, my parents are aging, my sister is handicapped. And at some point, we may want to utilize all of the space for them. We would, and, and then, Madam Chair, you.
But you know what, but I see, is, so is there a way to get out of the space without going up and downstairs if that's, if that's what you're proposing, a reason for this space in the basement?
Right, there's, if, if you go through, well, no, there is not, but, but you had mentioned handicap accessibility, which we, if my parents or someone would move in, we'd obviously want to, we would want to utilize, we would want to create that. And also, you mentioned to move to the first floor potentially, which we, we've discussed it, my wife and I, and that would be if, you know, when, when, right now, we're happy to have an office there, but if we were to put my parents there, obviously, we'd want to utilize that space for the first floor and move my entire family out.
Okay, my sense of this is that this is excessive use of, of the space in the basement. But let me just ask Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
The, the plans are, they do show, as the, Mr. Katz is mentioning, I mean, unfortunately, you know, I'm nervous a little bit, they are the minimal amount of window well, and they are fully below grade, so I think in terms of.
I'm sorry.
It, it, you know, and I think the, the reality of it as well is the only stair access to the lower level is a historical winder, so I, I'm even a little nervous that the stair coming down is not really a, a, a safe egress path. So there's multiple concerns, I think, similar to when we heard this the last time.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Can, can I respond to the grade?
No, no, no. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Put on record in non-opposition. During the community process, it was originally slated for subcommittee. Flies were circulated, we got one letter of support, more letter of opposition. The Butters in opposition is concerned about, now that the property is no longer owner-occupied, that it could be rented out to college students, concerned about traffic, excuse me, not traffic, construction noise as well. The applicant did go to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. After some debate, they did vote to support, judging that there was a simple variance floor area ratio. With that information, we defer to the board.
And I have no raised hands at the moment, Madam Chair.
I think there is, there is a neighbor on Dolores. I'm not sure if she's at the computer or not.
She didn't raise her hand, but I, I'll check on it. Dolores, can you hear us? Is she looking to give testimony for this proposal?
Yes, I'm trying to get on.
Okay, we can hear you. Are you on two computers? Because there's an echo.
Um, no, I'm on my phone.
Okay, go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Dolores Cuzo, I live at 27 and a half Priscilla Road. I'm commenting on 29 Priscilla Road.
Go ahead.
Mr. Katz no longer lives at that house. He has rented out both the first unit and the second unit. We also believe someone is living in the bottom basement, but we can't verify that. We can verify that where Mr. Katz was living on the second floor before, he rented the apartment through Silo. And there's, you know, three or four gentlemen there. There's a family of four that lives on the first floor. Think that Mr. Katz has misrepresented himself numerous times. The first time, he wanted bedrooms, you know, more bedrooms for his children. At the last meeting, he, he was asked what the most compelling reason to renovate the basement was, and he said to bring his elderly parents here. Now he's talking about an office space, but in reality, we believe that someone's already living in the basement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's just the, Ms. Ambassador, anybody else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so given that information, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Second.
Is there a second?
I'm not, I'm not allowed to respond.
All, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Please, if.
No one's interested in my response to that?
No, um, Tom, can you send somebody from ISD out to just check on that basement, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, it looks like there's an open long-form permit, so there would be an inspector out there recently.
Okay, just, just make sure that there's no construction going on in that basement. Okay, okay, thank you. It's, the meeting is now adjourned, so you see, see all you board members next week, okay? Have a great week.
Thanks.
Bye.